Good morning, everyone. Sorry I'm late. My electricity went off momentarily, so I couldn't get on. Or my neighbor's doing construction, or something happened. We'll go ahead and get started. Good morning. Welcome to the 11:00 A.M. session of the closed session of the September 28th, 2021 meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. If you would like to comment on a closed session item, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. In this part of the meeting, the council will receive public testimony. Thereafter, the public line will be closed and inaccessible. Please, if you, let me look out to the participants here. Indeed, I'm not seeing any attendees in our meeting this afternoon, so we will go ahead and we will move now to the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Watkins.
She informed me that she is going to, she's running a couple minutes late as well.
Okay.
I just got a text.
If someone can let me know when she does join also. Kalentari Johnson.
And then.
Brown.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Golda is currently absent. Vice Mayor Brunner.
Present.
And Mayor Myers.
Present. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to any items listed on today's closed session agenda? I am not seeing any, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned, and the council will go into its closed session. We are ready to roll. Good afternoon. Welcome to the 12:15 session of the September 28th, 2021 Santa Cruz City Council meeting. I have a few announcements, and then we will move on to our meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on Community Television 25 and streaming on the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com. If you wish to comment on an agenda item today, call in at the screen, or the item you are wanting to comment on using the instructions on your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note, there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it is time for public comment, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak during public comment, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. You may hang up once you have commented on your item of interest. And I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Kalentari Johnson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Golda is absent. Vice Mayor Brunner.
Present.
And Mayor Myers.
And present. Thank you. We'll now move on to our presentations today. And first, we have our interim fire chief, Rob Odie, providing presentation on Fire Prevention Week. Welcome, Rob. I see that Rob's on, but I don't have his camera on and his, he's muted. There he is. There he is.
Hmm, that's me. I'm sharing.
That's right. Probably didn't think you were gonna get to, get to things so fast. We're on time, at least for now, right? That's right. Let's see. Do we want to switch to order of the two presentations? We could, yes. I believe Bonnie Lipscomb.
I think he's unmu, I think he's unmuted now.
Is he? Okay.
Hello.
Hi, Rob. Welcome.
You guys, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Rob, just real quick, just, I'm not sure if you intend, but Bonnie, the way that we're seeing is, it has, we're seeing the, yeah, the.
Yeah, okay.
How are you now?
Geez, not quite put it back up yet, Rob. Bonnie, are you putting it back up?
I am. Is that better, or no?
There we go. Yep, there you go.
Awesome.
Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to thank everybody for, you know, allowing me to take part in Fire Prevention Week. Obviously, Fire Prevention Week is in October. Next slide. Couple things, obviously, the history of Fire Prevention Week, the theme of this year, and then, of course, as always, want to cover emergency preparedness. Next slide. So history of Fire Prevention Week, obviously, anniversary of the great Chicago Fire of October 9th. In 1925, President Calvin Coolidge declared Fire Prevention Week as a national observance and always wanted to include October 9th. Next slide. Yeah, like I, like I said before, observed annually on the week containing the week of the anniversary of the Chicago Fire, focus on fire safety awareness, and all the messages provided by the National Fire Protection Agency. Next slide. So this week, this year is the Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. Next slide. So I wanted to educate everybody on the different sounds that smoke and carbon dioxide alarms make, knowing what to do when those alarms sound, and then what happens if if there's, if there be smoke alarms and, and alert devices. And then, of course, when, when you actually have an alert, what, what do you do? Next slide. So the sounds of fire safety are this one. Next slide. Hey Bonnie, can I go back to that last slide? Bonnie? There you go. I don't. But I don't have that slide in front of me, but if Bonnie?
You want me to move a bit forward?
There you go. So again, the sounds of fire safety. If you a, yeah, a single shirt. Uh, next slide. Um, so emergency preparedness is a, is a huge factor for us, and so we want to make sure that we spread the message of emergency preparedness. If you go to our website, you will you, you'll see this flyer that I've prepared. Next slide. We want to pledge that everybody is prepared for any emergency. Next slide. So some things that you can do to make sure that you're prepared is create or join a firewise group, create or join a response team, sign up for code RED, develop an evacuation plan, and have a communication plan with your family, and create a go bag. Next slide, next slide. For more information, you guys can go to the cityofsantacruz.com and sign up for code RED, and also get additional information for emergency preparedness. Next slide. Any questions?
Any questions from the councilmembers on fire prevention? I think we're good, Rob. Thank you so much for the, for the presentation. Okay, next up, we will have a mayoral proclamation declaring September 13th through the 18th as Seawall's Week. And I will read the proclamation, and then I believe, I will look for Bonnie Lipscomb. I believe we may have some visuals. And are you, are you planning to put those up as, as I read this, or are we gonna sort of look at that first? What's your, what's, you and I did not get a chance. Cool.
Yeah, Bonnie, Bonnie is actually putting it up for us both.
Great. Okay. So this is the mayor's proclamation, whereas the Pangaea Seed Foundation is an international nonprofit organization based in Hawaii, acting at the intersection of cultural and environmentalism to further ocean conservation, whose mission is to empower individuals and communities to create meaningful change for the oceans through science, education, and artivism, otherwise known as CEA. And whereas Seawall, Artists for Oceans, is the Pangaea Seed Foundation's groundbreaking public art program that brings the oceans into the streets around the world by creating large-scale artworks that speak to locally relevant pressing marine environmental issues such as plastic pollution, ocean acidification, warm seas, local biodiversity loss, environmental justice, and more. And whereas the motto of the Seawall Artists for Oceans program is, "A drop of paint can create an ocean of change." In fact, the canned paint for the Santa Cruz Festival was sourced from Maud Armor, a festival sponsor that produces unstocked, toxic, zero VOC-based, water-based paints infused with a mineral that attracts and neutralizes harmful air pollutants, including VOCs, airborne chemicals, and carbon, excuse me, carbon dioxide. And whereas the city's arts commission unanimously and enthusiastically recommended sponsorship of the Pangaea Seed Foundation's Global Seawall Artists for the Oceans program. And whereas the Public Works Department provided logistical support, problem-solving skills, and parking garage walls to the Seawall Santa Cruz Festival, and the Economic Development Department provided financial planning and overall programming support. And whereas, over the span of a week, more than 25 artists participated in creating nineteen conservation-themed murals in Santa Cruz. Many were local Santa Cruzans from within California, and others were from as far away as Austria, Hawaii, and other states. And whereas the Seawall's murals are located at the gateway to the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary to bring attention to the global environmental issues that impact our ecosystem, and to spark conserva, conversation, and to unify and inspire local Santa Cruz, the local Santa Cruz community and our visitors to stand up for our coastal resources. And whereas the Pangaea Seed Foundation's Seawall Artists for Oceans program is responsible for installing over 400 murals in 17 countries, and soon, Santa Cruz will take its place on the interactive seawalls.org global map, where the, where with a click, one can explore each mural's unique story. And whereas the Seawall Santa Cruz video will document the festival for city residents and serve to attract more visitors to explore our murals and understand climate impacts on our region, downloadable city map showing the locations and themes of each of the murals is available online, Seawall Santa Cruz map, and at locations around the city. And whereas Lookout Wallace-Bain has suggested that Santa Cruz may now rank among the elite showcase cities for murals on the West Coast. And whereas, Santa Cruz city residents will get to enjoy and interact with these murals for years to come. Now therefore, I, Donna Myers, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim September 13th through the 18th, 2021, as Seawall Santa Cruz Week in the City of Santa Cruz, and encourage all citizens to join me in acknowledging the many sponsors and community supporters of the Seawall Santa Cruz Festival, and particularly honoring local muralists Taylor Reinhold, Sadie Phillips, and the Made Fresh Crew. And also, appreciation for the Tannery Art Center for their organizing capacity as well the week prior and during the, the murals as they were being painted. Just want to congratulate this amazing effort in Santa Cruz, and we're so lucky and pleased that this happened here in our town. So thank you, everyone, that made it happen, and everyone got to see the video, but it's quite a, quite a feat that we watched unfold here in Santa Cruz last week, and we're very excited. I'll see if any councilmembers have any questions, and then we'll move on to our next agenda item.
And Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to mention that Taylor Reinhold, who is our local celebrity muralist and organizer through Pangaea Seed for the Seawall Festival, is available and here today, so he may want to say a few words. But I just also want to just add my appreciation. The timing of Seawall Santa Cruz, as we are recovering from the pandemic, and what it has done in many of our areas, has really been transformative. So particularly, when you look downtown, the number of murals we have, look at the activation of Frasier Lewis Lane, it's just had such a very positive community impact. So I just want to add my appreciation to all of you on the council for supporting Seawall Santa Cruz Festival, and to Taylor and the Made Fresh Crew for making this possible. So thank you. And with that, I'll turn.
Welcome, Taylor. You're, looks like you're, you pressed star nine, it was a star six. There you are. Welcome, Taylor, and congratulations. Super excited you're here today.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm, I'm here with Trey Packard, the founder of Seawalls and Pangaea Seed. We're on site in Bimini Bahamas for Seawall Bimini, just getting the wall today, and the artist arrived, so we'll be doing another activation here. We had to fly out the day after we finished Seawall Santa Cruz, and we couldn't be more thrilled and excited on how the project worked out, and just the community buzz that we've gotten, and how many sponsors and, and people from, from the entire community came out to support us. So we're thrilled. Thank you so much. Super excited. Scott Greathouse, I think, is on here as well, and possibly Erica Rosendale, our local artist operations coordinators for Made Fresh Crew that did so much work to make the project happen. And we'll be continuing the conversation. Seawall has never been back to the same place. They're a nonprofit, but because the event went so well, we're already talking about Seawall Santa Cruz 2022 or '23. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Taylor. Thank you, Trey. You guys, amazing work. Really, really appreciate everything you did, and so glad you partnered with the city on that. I'll go ahead, and Vice Mayor Brunner has a couple of comments.
I wanted to thank, good to see you, Taylor and Trey, and Erica and Sadie, and Joe, and Fender, and Griffin, and all the artists that participated and really got to know Santa Cruz as they were here painting during the week. And, and we get to live with the beauty of those murals every day. We're very fortunate, and thank you for bringing that ocean awareness and beautifying those walls within our city. We really appreciate the project, appreciate your hard work, and totally are grateful. I'm grateful for the art that you brought. The public art is amazing. Thank you so much. I'm glad you were able to join from the Bahamas.
Thank you, Sonia. Thank you for the recognition. We greatly appreciate it.
And Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'll be brief, and I really do appreciate all the work that you all have done, and the art that you were able to bring to our community. I mean, empty walls are, are just, you know, large canvases that need to be filled, and, you know, the message that you all brought is this combination of environmentalism, but also inspiration, artists to see what they can do, and it just really reflects on how much our community appreciates art, and also how much we appreciate the oceans and our environment, and trying to inspire people to protect these ecosystems. So, you know, again, sharing with my colleagues how much we very much appreciate the community, because I've been just overwhelmingly expressing how grateful they are for you all bringing this to our community, and so just thanks again. And if there's any way that we can continue to support you all in the future, because we know artists struggle to make these dreams happen, please let us know, because we would love to partner in any way we can to help support you all in your mission, so that we can just spread this message across the world. So thank you all.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Well, thanks, you guys. Just want to let you know that on Sister Cities Exchange last week, I did, I did bring the Seawall's, all your work you guys were doing, the Buret's Ranch. You may be getting a phone call. They have lots of big brick walls there, so, and they're very much an ocean community, so trying to spread the word. So thank you again, you guys, and travel safe, and keep up all the amazing work you're doing. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Ciao.
Okay, next, I have a few announcements, and then we will move on to our regular meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on Community Television Channel 25 and streaming on the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com. If you wish to comment on an agenda item today, instructions are provided on your screen. We will provide these instructions throughout the meeting whenever we move into an agenda item that's opened up for public comment. Please note, public comment is heard only on items council is taking action on, and not regular updates and reports. The items that will be open for public comment during today's meeting are numbers nine through 17 on our agenda. I'd like to ask the councilmembers if there are any statements of disqualification today. I am not seeing any. We'll move on to, I'd like to ask the city clerk to announce any additions or deletions to our agenda today.
Fair enough.
I'm gonna make a quick announcement about oral communications. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda. Oral communications occur immediately after item, agenda item 17, which we are estimating will be around 6:20 tonight. If you wish to make a comment during oral communications, please call in towards the end of item number 16, which again, we anticipate will be sometime around 6:20 this evening. I'd like to call on our city attorney to provide a report on closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Myers, members of the city council. This meeting, this morning, the council convened in closed session via Zoom to discuss the following items. Item one was a conference with legal counsel regarding liability claims. Those are the claims of Mona Drada, Steven Gil Nobles, and Zo Jaji. apologize for the pronunciations. Those are also listed this afternoon on your open session agenda as item number 13. Council also conferred with legal counsel on two pending litigation items. Number one was Nationwide Insurance Company of America versus the City of Santa Cruz et al. Number two was Allstate Northbrook Indemnity Company on behalf of Alexander Acosta v. Kyle Score et al. Those are two cases pending in the Santa Cruz County Superior Court. There was no reportable action on those items. Item three was a conference with legal counsel concerning initiation of potential litigation. Council met and conferred with the city attorney's office on that item, continued that item to the end of the open session agenda for further discussion. So that, so the council will reconvene following the oral communications this afternoon or this evening to continue that discussion. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any councilmember questions or comments.
Any, councilmembers have any questions for Mr. Kundadi? I am not seeing any questions. Thank you, Tony. And next, the council will review the meeting calendar attached to the agenda and revise it as necessary. I'll now call on the city clerk to provide any to the calendar.
And we have no updates.
And I will look at interim city manager Rosemary Menard.
I just wanted to say that I think you might have skipped the city manager's report.
Uh-oh. You did, you're right. I did. Sorry. Let's back up. We'll move on to item number six now. That is the city manager report, and I'll invite city manager Rosemary Menard to make that report.
Good afternoon, Mayor Myers, Vice Mayor Brunner, and members of the council. I do have a few items for you today. The first one is a presentation and opportunity for you to ask a few questions on the eviction moratorium ending at the, which happens on the end of the day on Thursday. Stephanie Duck from the city attorney's office will give you that, and then we're gonna have a brief, by Lee Butler, about the homelessness issues, and followed by a quick update on by October by some folks from our Public Works and Transportation Group, so, and a contractor. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Stephanie on the eviction moratorium.
And Mayor Myers and city councilmembers, I am here from the city attorney's office to provide just a brief update on the state's eviction moratorium, which expires this month on the 30th. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And I'm already getting error messages, so one second, please.
I have it up too, Stephanie, have you?
Do you mind, Bonnie? I'm getting a screen I've never seen before. Let's just, there we go. Are you able to put it up, Bonnie? Sorry. Are you able to put it up, Bonnie? Sorry, I'm not seeing it yet. There we go. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Bonnie. Sorry. Um, so again, briefly wanted to cover, um, and I give a brief overview of California's, um, executive orders, the governor's executive orders and the city's ordinances regarding both, uh, commercial and residential evictions. Uh, the most recent state legislation regarding the eviction moratorium for residential evictions, um, as well as discuss a little bit about, um, California's Housing is Key Rent Relief Initiative. Uh, before diving in, I did just want to make clear to any members of the public who may be listening right now that this presentation is meant as an update for city council. Um, it should not be construed as legal advice for members of the public. Um, if you are, um, in need of legal assistance, please contact, um, an attorney for that assistance. Okay. And with that, fun stuff, Bonnie, you can go ahead to the next slide, please. Okay, so as all of you are aware, in March 2020, Governor, Governor Newsom, uh, issued an executive order that, um, essentially suspended any laws that would preempt a local government from enacting, um, either a residential or commercial eviction moratorium, um, as a result of non-payment of rent, um, resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. So in response to these executive orders, uh, city council adopted an ordinance, um, essentially a residential and commercial eviction moratorium for the, uh, failure to pay rent, uh, when that failure to pay rent was a result of economic losses related to the COVID-19 pandemic. In August 2020, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill 3088, which imposed a statewide temporary eviction moratorium for residential tenancies. Um, so with AB 3088, the city was, uh, preempted from extending or modifying its, uh, residential eviction moratorium. Next slide, please. So while the city was pre- extending or further adopting any residential eviction protections, uh, Governor Newsom did issue Executive Order, um, 8020, which extended a government's authority to impose restrictions on commercial evictions. Um, this was further extended, um, until September 30th of this year, as in this week. Um, and so, um, due to this executive order, the city adopted, um, an emergency ordinance imposing a temporary eviction moratorium on commercial evictions. Um, the governor has not further extended that, um, the local government's authority to, um, impose restrictions on commercial evictions past that September 30th date. And so, um, the city's commercial eviction moratorium will expire this week on September 30th. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Just real briefly, in addition to those, um, executive orders and new state legislation regarding, um, state and commercial evictions, uh, the governor also issued Executive Order number 4220, which prohibited water systems in California from discontinuing water services to residential customers or small businesses, um, in infrastructure for non-payment of water bills through September 30th of this year. That did not relieve water, uh, customers from paying those bills for water services. Um, and then recently Senate Bill 155 was, uh, passed, which extended that prohibition until the end of this year. So December 31st, 2021. Um, additionally, the State Water Resources Control Board has recently adopted draft guidelines, um, to establish a process, uh, to distribute COVID-19 relief funds um, for people who have those, uh, debts for those water services. So side note on an additional protection out there. Next slide, please. Brief overview of the, the state's legislation regarding residential eviction moratorium. Um, again, I mentioned we had AB 3088, which extended the residence, residential eviction moratorium to January 31st of this year. And then Senate Bill 91 further extended that through June 30th of this year. And Senate Bill 91, it is the state's, uh, rental assistance program, which provided, um, rental relief to California households, um, to landlords and tenants who may be impacted by the pandemic. And that was initially meant, um, the state would reimburse up to 80% of, uh, rental debt. Then again, we had additional legislation, the most current legislation, so AB 832 extended the state's residential eviction moratorium through September 30th of this year. So that's this week, and we have had no further legislation extending that. So the residential eviction moratorium, the state's residential eviction moratorium ends September 30th this week. That bill expanded the state's residential, uh, the rental assistance program to provide for 100% of reimbursement for qualifying rental debt. Um, that legislation also expressly protects, um, a local government from imposing any additional residential eviction protections until April 1st of next year, 2022. Next slide, please. Essentially, what AB 32 says is, um, a tenant cannot be evicted for failing to pay rent, um, as a, as a result of COVID-19, uh, on or before September 30th. As long as they pay, um, 25%, at least 25% of the demanded rent and deliver a declaration of COVID-19-related financial distress to their landlord. Um, beginning October 1st, so very soon, um, those protections no longer apply. Residential tenants may face eviction for their failure to pay rent. And beginning November, landlords may collect unpaid rent, um, in small claims court. Next slide, please. Um, so essentially, this is the important part for anybody listening, um, by September 30th of this year, um, any tenants who need rental assistance need to sign and, uh, sign and return the declaration of COVID-19 related to financial distress, um, within 15 days of when they receive it from their landlord. It should have been provided to them by their landlord. If not, it's available online. You can print it out there and provide it to your landlord. Um, apply for rental assistance. That is important, um, by September 30th, so this week, um, and pay 25% of demanded rent. Um, again, I just want to make very clear to any members of the public who might be listening, um, or any tenants or landlords out there, if you have questions on this, please reach out to an attorney, um, for legal advice on this. Slide, please. Um, I've provided, um, non-exclusive list of legal resources for anybody who would like them. Uh, you can contact the Santa Cruz County Superior Court Self-Help Center, 831-786-7200, option four. Uh, the California Rural Legal Assistance, 831-724-2253. Uh, the Watsonville Law Center, 831-722-284. And the Senior Citizens Legal Services at 831-426-8824. And next slide, we will just briefly, um, let everyone know how you can apply for rental assistance. You can apply at housingiskey.com. You can call 833-430-2122. You can text the word rent to 1211 or contact, um, 833-687-0967, which will put you in touch with a local organization that can help you apply for rent relief. So that is the end of my slide presentation there. Um, we can leave that up so folks can see that if they want. Um, and I am happy to answer any questions that someone might have on this.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there council members who have questions? I see Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Cummings?
Uh, thank you, uh, Stephanie, for the overview. Um, I, I just want to note here, which is, I imagine, obvious to all those watching and listening, that, uh, this is a very short timeline before the expiration of the moratorium, the state moratorium. Um, and so I just have a couple of questions. One is related to the rental assistance portion, and I'm not sure that this is for legal, per se, but I'm, um, we've also probably been hearing stories. I've certainly been contacted by people and I know other council members have, and it's been in the paper. There is all this, um, you know, ostensibly there's rental assistance money and people aren't be able to access it. And, and that's a very high percentage of the overall pot of funding. Um, a very low percentage of people who have at least initiated the attempt to get rental assistance are, are running into troubles. So do you have any information about, um, how the state is not? I mean, we're, you know, I, I just see this kind of gridlock potential here coming and, um, people are certainly very concerned and already receiving notices that they're going to be evicted. Um, so just wondering about that piece. And then, um, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear here that what the new legislation says is that, that, so we basically have to allow evictions to happen before we, and, and just allow that to, that wave to happen. Um, and then in April, we can, of '22, we can reevaluate if, if, if we want to try to put an eviction moratorium back on the books as an emergency, if there is an ongoing emergency, which I fully expect there will be. Um, is that what's happening? The state is asking us to stay, step out of the way or stay out of the way and allow us to continue? Okay.
In not as many words, I would say, so the reason why the city was able to enact, um, its first residential eviction moratorium was because the executive order granted the authority or essentially suspended any laws that would preempt the, the city from doing so. Um, the, the bill is very, um, explicit that we are, the city is preempted from creating any state, uh, residential eviction moratoriums until April of 2022. Um, I think that's something our office would need to look into further. It's, it's always been my understanding that we preempted without that executive order, giving the city the authority or, or suspending the laws that would preempt the city from doing that. Um, and that's certainly something our office can look into. Uh, but that is my understanding at this time, um, that, that we would essentially, we would likely be preempted. Um, and that we certainly cannot, um, enact anything until at least April 2022. Um, and to take a question too about, um, you know, I, I am not sure what the state is doing, um, with, um, if people are having issues, um, applying for funding. I do know, um, I did attend a presentation by some service providers, the Watsonville, uh, Legal Center or Law Center and Community Bridges. And they did say that if you, if you do contact, um, some of those service providers, they do have a way to, um, I think, uh, contact the state to, to kind of give you a boost. So certainly something if you, if there are tenants, um, who are struggling with that, do reach out to those service providers out there. And I think that they can help navigate that a little better.
Thank you. And then-
With that answer, I hope that's-
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Not satisfying.
No, you're, I mean, you're with the information available, yes. I mean, it's just a, it's a very, uh, dismain set of circumstances that I think we're going to find ourselves in and, you know, the extent to which the capacity of the local organizations to have, you know, a lot of operators on call to be able to answer all, you know, the questions that are coming in on this deadline is, um, you know, is limited. And, um, so, um, it's just, yeah, it's, it's really unfortunate. But I do think, you know, I'll just comment and say that I think it, it really isn't incumbent upon us to find any and all, um, avenues for supporting tenants who are in distress, um, because it is, um, you know, it, it, we're already seeing the impact and I think it's just going to get bigger and, and more problematic. And, um, we know when we keep people housed that, um, you know, everybody, everybody wins. So, um, for sharing with us, uh, your, your updates.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Cummings?
I think, um, my questions have mostly been answered. I was going to ask about that kind of preemptive, um, portion of the executive order, because I think it's important for people to know that, you know, Beverly has her hands in our ability to enact further protections, um, as much as, you know, we would like to ensure that we can keep people in their home. I think it would be good, um, if there's some way we can receive updates on, um, whether it's the number of people who are applying to these programs, you know, in terms of rental assistance and, and, um, and also, um, hoping that maybe we can get some information also about people who might not be receiving that assistance. I was contacted by a woman who, um, I eventually was able to connect with the Cali and folks in Watsonville. Um, and she'd been issued a, uh, notice to quit, even though she'd been paying her rent. Um, she'd been having some, uh, interactions with the landlord, but was issued a, um, more or less an, um, eviction notice, but it's not through the state. It's, it's a, what's called a notice to quit for members of the public who are watching. Um, but it was issued to her during a time, the eviction, when people weren't actually legally able to evict, um, people during the pandemic. And when she tried to get assistance, one of the things they said was that there were thousands of people who were applying with their backlog. And, you know, it takes three to six months to address some of these applications because of the sheer load of people who are applying for these, for this assistance. So, you know, to the extent that we can understand how, how many people are applying, who's receiving, then, you know, really get to, to know whether or not we're, people are going to be receiving the help we're claiming that the state is providing versus, um, who's getting turned away. I think it'd be really important for us to know, um, how can not only get people the assistance, but improve these systems moving forward. So.
And I can provide a link to council. I'm sorry I didn't include it in the PowerPoint. I know the, um, Housing is Key website does have, um, a, it has statistics on, on, um, who is receiving what, is my understanding. And I'll send that to council. I see Bonnie is on here as well, if maybe she has additional information to provide on that.
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. And, uh, for Councilmember Brown and Cummings, if I can just, I'll just share my screen really quickly. I just wanted to show exactly the dashboard that Stephanie was referencing. And, um, I want to make sure, can, is it showing on the screen? Okay, great. And so for the city of Santa Cruz, you can actually go to the Housing is Key, um, website. And, um, I just want to acknowledge Jessica and Tiffany that sent this link over to me. Um, you can go and look up Santa Cruz County and see the data for the whole county, which is, they have, um, actually given in countywide. And you can then drill down on City of Santa Cruz, which is what I have shown right here. And you can see that 462 applications have been received. Of those, 461 were deemed complete. 151 households were served in Santa Cruz for a total so far of 1.65 million. Um, so that's between a quarter and a third of those that have a plus have received on average, uh, looks like just under 11,000 in assistance. I don't know, and, and to your question, um, Councilmember Cummings, what is the status of those that are still in the queue, what that timing is and the reasons why they weren't awarded? Um, so we'll, we'll follow up on that and see if there's any further information we can share or any advocacy that we, that we can do.
Um, Bonnie, Bonnie, can I just add one thing? I, the allocation to the county was $15 million from the original program in funding. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Yeah, between 15 and 16, I think. Yeah.
And, um, Bonnie, I'm wondering, um, if there's a way maybe we could get some of Stephanie's deck, maybe our website? Um, and with, you know, Elizabeth, if you're on, maybe there's a way to, you know, make sure that it's very prominent since the deadline is, um, is Thursday, um, to make sure that people kind of understand where they should go. I don't know if there's a way that we can make sure it's prominent on our website in case people are going there for help as well.
And then I have one follow-up question. Is, are there any other, um, the PPP loans that went out to help small businesses? But are, are there any other forms of assistance for small businesses where we can point them to if they might be facing evictions as well?
Um, Councilmember Cummings, you're talking specific commercial. So we do have our expanded Grow Santa Cruz Loan Program, and we have a few billion in funding available for Santa Cruz businesses through that loan program. We also have through our EE Trust Fund, um, are considering a second round of micro, uh, loan funds with our partner, Santa Cruz Community Credit Union. So we did, um, hand out over 51, um, loans totaling half a million um, earlier in the pandemic. And so we do have funding reserved for a potential second, second round. If we, uh, it looks like we're getting close to exhausting the, we have set aside for the Grow Santa Cruz Loan Fund.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It sounds like, um, yeah, not a good situation at all. Um, anybody watching, please also know that you can contact the, you know, city manager's office for referrals to our, to our housing experts as needed. Um, we certainly, and we can provide Spanish, Spanish translation and contact to, through, um, Peter, our, uh, our, uh, our staff person. So anyone watching, please go ahead and reach out to the city. It will help to the extent that we can. Okay, we will now move, uh, Rosemary, you've got, we've got Lee next. Yep.
Right. A couple of quick other things. Thank you, Stephanie. So, um, that's a city manager and community development, planning, you know, community development director, Lee Butler is going to give you a quick update on homelessness.
Thank you, Rosemary, and good afternoon, mayor and council members.
Thank you, Rosemary, and good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to talk to you quickly about the Armory, the San Lorenzo River Vegetation Management, and a quick update on the county's rehousing wave as well. So the city and county are in conversations of operations at the Armory, as well as how that would work with the city's operation of a safe sleeping program at the site. We're looking to see how we could have mutually beneficial and ideally coordinated city and county programming there. And we're in conversations with the county about how that could work. We're accessing information with information about that partnership in this coming month. So we'll keep you posted on that as it progresses. With respect to the San Lorenzo River Vegetation Management, the council will recall, this is something that's done on an annual basis. Each fall, we conduct significant vegetation removal activities along the San Lorenzo River to address flood control requirements. The vegetation removal work is starting this week. Phase one stretches from Highway One down to Water Street. And then the next two phases will continue south from there to the River Mountain. We are aware of people who are camping in that area, and those in the affected areas have been provided with notices and will continue to work with those individuals over the next few weeks as the, the work is progressing in those next phases. And finally, some information coming out of the, the county's rehousing wave. We've talked with the council a number of times, and the, the county was here and spoke to you as well with respect to their efforts with Abode Consultants, as well as with Housing Matters as a consultant. And they are, this is a county contract that is focusing on primarily rehousing the individuals who have been in the COVID hotel shelters. And those hotels are closing down, they're in the process of closing down, as you all know. So the, the update, that's all things that you, the, the update that I wanted to share was that the, the county has been, as of late, placing between six and 10 people per week into housing. So that's, that's certainly an improvement over what we saw as the early numbers. So we're pleased with that progress. Obviously, we'd like to see more, but I did want to share that, that pace has been picking up, and we're hopeful that it continues in the right direction and the same direction as more people are able to get housed coming out of those hotels. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for, for Lee today? I am not seeing any hands. Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
Okay, so rounding out the City Managers' report today, we're going to have a little update on Bike Tober. Claire, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Claire Gugley, Transportation Planner, and I'm here today with Matt Miller, his screen is coming on right now, from Ecology Action, one of our key partners in encouraging more people to try biking. And Matt is going to give you an overview of all the fun events happening in the month of October, which has been deemed Bike Tober, which the city is contributing to in order to continue meeting our Go Santa Cruz and Climate Action Plan goals. So Matt, take it away.
Thank you, Claire. Hi, Mayor, hi, council. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for the time, and happy almost Bike Tober. Just want to confirm that my screen is visible to everybody?
We can see it, Matt, yeah.
Super. So this is basically what I'd like to do, just in a few minutes, is just give you an overview of what Bike Tober is, find what it is, give you kind of an FYI, as well as invite you all to participate. You may know that has been running Bike to Work Day for 35 years, and that is one of our big community activations across Santa Cruz County, where we inspire bike ridership at all layers of society, from little kids going to school to folks going to work, to people getting around for their basic transportation. In that spirit, with our evolutions through COVID, moving a lot of our programming virtual and trying to find new ways of reaching people, we have developed kind of a new way of rolling out Bike Month, which happens in May, and Bike Tober, which happens in October. And like all these campaigns, it's designed to get more people riding their bikes more often. So Bike Tober, which starts on Friday, has a few core components that I'd like to show you. What we're viewing right now is our landing page, which you can find at ecoact.org/biketober. And we have a few things going on throughout the month. It is, of course, anchored by our Bike Challenge. Many of you have participated. The city of Santa Cruz has a big team. Claire, thanks for all of your championing of that over the years, a number of you who are on the call today who have taken part. Bike Challenge is great because it allows people to do what they can to contribute. It's not one event on one morning, but rather, if you get out for one bike ride over the course of October, that's a win. But it also enables people who ride regularly or all the time to have a place to come and support other folks getting on their bikes. So like many other challenges that we've done, workplaces can sign up, and they can have a team. Individuals can sign up, and they can do their own goal setting, and they can pursue prizes. The city of Santa Cruz already has a team in place, so anybody who's on the call that works for the city of Santa Cruz can take part in that. We have a series of prizes that are available, weekly prizes that give people gift cards to local bike shops of their choice to support them in their. We have a $1,000 grand prize for one individual who rides sometime over the course of October. And then we also have a $1,500 workplace prize for the top workplace. So we have a lot of financial incentives baked in, as well as all of the other methods that we have for supporting people. When people register, they indicate if they're a new or a regular rider, and then that they get customized messaging and resources, depending on where they're at in their journey. To support biking throughout the month, we also have a few other things happening. You'll notice here, we have a couple of workshops that will be taking place via Zoom. These are open to anybody, anybody who has an internet connection. We have one in the beginning of the month, focused safety and rules of the road. And we have one towards the end of the month, that's a deeper dive on bike commuting. And then throughout the month, we have group rides that are happening in different parts of Santa Cruz County, starting from Westside to Midtown, Midtown to SoCal, SoCal to Abpoz, and also Watsonville. And these are designed to be beginner-friendly, family-friendly rides that give people access to low-stress bike routes, primarily for transportation, getting around town. We found from our own survey data, from all of these challenges and many years of Bike to Work, that one of the biggest barriers that we face in Santa Cruz County to having more people ride their bikes, of course, is traffic safety and feeling like there are safe routes and safe places for them to ride. So these rides, we started with in Bike Month, we are doing them again for Bike Tober, and we're expanding them to invite more people. So this is the, the makeup of Bike Tober. This is the group ride page. You're also welcome, any of you listening today. We still have spots available, so if you'd like to attend one of these events, they're free, you get a free gift card to get breakfast or a destination. They are very fun, community-based rides happening throughout October, that you can participate or tell your people about it. And then the challenge part happens via Love to Ride, and that's where you can log your rides, join your team, set goals. This is a great place to send people to, to sign up for the challenge. That's an overview of what we have happening for Bike Tober. There's a lot of great stuff in here. Behavior change is difficult. I would also just contextualize this for City Council and many people who are probably stretched thin and have limited bandwidth. When we're trying to get people to change their behavior, it's really challenging. But Bike Month and Bike Tober offer really good focal points for people who are distracted and doing a lot of things to have quite a bit of impact. So we have government, we have local businesses, we have community-based organizations, and members of the public that all have eyes on Bike Tober. And so if we're going to invest our time at all in a given year, this is a great opportunity for us to collectively focus ourselves to have a big impact. So I would leave you with, try it, go for a ride, tell your coworkers, your friends, your peers, your family, your kids. This is a great opportunity and at least one of the tools in the toolkit to get more of our population riding by bike and feel supported and celebrated for doing so. So thank you for the time. Thank you, Santa Cruz, for all of the really great progressive work you're doing to support biking. Claire, appreciate you calling me in, and I will answer any questions that might be coming up for people. If there are.
Thanks so much, Matt. I will look to see if councilmembers have any questions. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Thanks for the encouragement. Last year was a little bit of a bust, but I'm going to try this time.
Yeah, just start, start small. Even getting out for one ride is great. Anything more than that is awesome, too.
Sounds good. Good to see you, Matt. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me, yeah.
Anything else, Rosemary?
Back to you.
Okay, get back on track here. Just for members of the public who may have joined later, we'll go ahead and go on to item seven, which we did visit previously. I'll just make sure to ask the clerk if there's any updates to our calendar. Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight on our agenda today, and this will be an opportunity for councilmembers to report out on actions at external boards, committees, and joint powers authority meetings. For future meetings, prepared to provide an update on any meetings or actions that occurred since the last council meeting, so the council and public can be informed. So I'll go ahead and work my way through councilmembers here. I'll start with Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. Two possibly three items to report out on. The Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, at their September meeting, we had a presentation in the California Department of Housing and Community Development on the Six-Cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment Process. And that was followed by a second presentation by Heather Anderson, Director of Planning. This was largely on the methodology options for the Six-Cycle Regional Housing Needs Allocation process. We didn't, we, we provided input, but we didn't take action at this meeting and received information. But one thing that Ambac staff did express was that if any city wanted to have a presentation on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Allocation Process, that they'd be more than willing to give a presentation and just knowing how that impacts affordability in the city in terms of arena numbers. If that's something that the council would be interested in having, we could probably coordinate something with Ambac staff to have them give a presentation during our presentation portion of our city council meetings to learn more about the, that process. In addition to that, from LAFCO, at the last meeting, we received a presentation regarding extraterritorial service agreements, or known as ESAs. These are meant, ESAs are meant to be immediate remedies for health and safety issues and are precursors to annexation, the annexation process, where areas outside of the city's jurisdiction that receive services becomes incorporated into those cities. At present, there are 41 active ESAs, and the board recommendation to send letters to the local agencies that are currently, that currently have extraterritorial service agreements in place, and request that the affected agencies develop an annexation plan by March 31, 2022, or provide a response explaining why annexation can't occur at this point in time. And then finally, just to kind of give a brief update, the UCSC City-City Task Force meeting, and one of the big topics that we've been discussing right now is the, the regions are going to make a decision this week on and approve the final EIR from UCSC, associated with Long Range Development Plan. And we've been really just kind of working together to understand how we're going to respond as a group and really trying to, to understand where the EIR is, where there might be efficiencies and encouraging the community to speak out if they are, if they disagree with the university's approach around the EIR. Members of the council will be commenting, and I think we've had our task force represent reaching out to other councilmembers as well. And so I think tomorrow, the regions will be meeting Public Comments at 8:00. And we're, a number of us are listed to comment on the EIR. It's a random selection process in terms of who gets to comment during Public Comment, but we find that at least a number of us are going to try to be available to make comments at that time. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll move on to Vice Mayor Bruner.
Thank you, Mayor Myers. Let's see, the two-by-two committee, I think Director Butler touched on the last meeting that I attended, really regarding city and county collaboration, looking at the Armory and operation, operations options, and discussing the, the current FEMA, COVID, hotel funding, the shelters closing, and the concurrent effort, the rehousing wave efforts. I was unable to attend the last meeting, so I'm, I'm not sure on that update, but that was the previous meeting. And Visit Santa Cruz Board Meeting, we're meeting tomorrow. On the agenda, we have a rail trail presentation, and also some activity reports for occupancy and ADR reports for July and August of this year. So next update, and I, Councilmember Watkins also sits on that, so maybe can add anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll go ahead and call on Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Myers. I will report on two questions that I'm on. Councilmember Cummings gave an update on the UC City-City Growth Task Force and the LRDB process with the UC Regents Meeting. So I will start with the Area Agency on Aging. I attended the last meeting as a representative of the city of Santa Cruz. The, quite a bit of the meeting was talking about, again, the master plan on aging, the California Master Plan on Aging, which I've mentioned here before, but I just wanted to give, while we have, it just feels like there's a sense of, like, a little bit extra time today, maybe go a little further into this because of our agendas, you know, a little bit lighter. So I'll just say that, so the master plan for aging, along with that, there, the state has designed a local playbook. And so our, at the local level, we are as representatives of the various jurisdictions in the county, in Santa Cruz County, and also San Benito Counties, which is part of our Area Agency on Aging structure, using the local playbook to help develop mod, kind of build environments that promote an age-friendly and a disability-friendly California. We have, there's a lot of great work that's happening, and so kind of inventorying that, but also looking at how we can work together to use the resources that are available to us through the state, and then also thinking about the funding that will come through the Master Aging, to, to really be prepared for that. And so there's a, a set of plays, and I won't go through them all, but a lot of it has to do with engagement with local leaders. And we are very fortunate that we have, at the county level, and I want to thank the county staff and Supervisor McPherson's office for working on getting some funding, some resources to help us work through the, you know, what, what we're going to work on with related to the local playbook. So things related to goals around housing, health, and, and other, and transportation equity for, and, and certainly looking at senior isolation, a, a major issue that has really become even more apparent during the shutdowns around COVID. So a lot of opportunity, a lot of really exciting stuff, and we're lucky, really lucky to have, you know, somebody who will. to have, you know, somebody who will, or will be looking for somebody at the consultant level to come and help facilitate that conversation. And so look forward to hearing more about how local jurisdictions can work together to support moving forward in a more integrated way around these, in these issue areas. The third meeting that I'll provide some highlights from was our September Regional Transportation Commission meeting. We talked about, at that meeting, the RTC authorized staff to update the Measure D five-year plan to allow for prioritization of some pre-construction activities that are really necessary to rehabilitate the capital of Tresle, so five existing bridges that make up the Tresle. And so findings from the conceptual repurposing study that's been done concluded the conditions of the bridges are fair to poor, which is not great news, but it's probably something that most of us were pretty well aware of. And so rehab is recommended, and so the county is moving forward as the oversight agency, and will work with RTC moving forward on what it's going to take to get those, those bridges up to par and potentially repurposed. We also talked about the kind of logistics and kind of issues around preservation of the Santa Cruz Branch Rail Line, which is the subject of much community conversation. And so we just got a report on kind of what, some of the intricacies and trying to better unpack the, you know, what might happen with the, you know, what stuff we need to take legally and then also policy-wise related to preservation of the rail line. So those are for today. Oh, I will say that the TIGM, a private company that is working on doing a demonstration project here and has been looking at the Santa Cruz Branch Rail Line as a possible place for some service, they're going to be bringing a car, or maybe, I'm not sure exactly all of the details, but they will be doing demonstration runs in South County and North County beginning October 16th. And I believe it's Coast Futura, it's the website, if you want to go and get the details and the schedules, is coastfutura.org, and you can find out more there and hopefully take a ride.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Very cool. I will call on Councilmember Conteri Johnson now.
Great, thank you. So I'll report on the Metro Board, and may I please fill in anything that I may have missed. The biggest item that we talked about this last month was the outstanding balance of $6.7 million in pensions. So the Metro Board approved a process to explore securing a bond, excuse me, that could save the Metro $36.9 million, so pursuing that. We got an update about vaccines and vaccination requirements. So we've seen an increase in employee vaccination at the Metro from 75% last month in August to 83% this month, so that's really good news, that it's moving in the right direction. And the Metro does still have this sort of hybrid directive, very similar to the county, that all unvaccinated employees must submit to weekly testing. And the Metro is exploring the San Francisco model, which is requiring vaccination of all employees. We also talked about structure bills, which would significantly impact all of us, but certainly the Metro Board. So the House is considering a $1.2 trillion traditional infrastructure bill, as well as a $3.5 trillion human, a human infrastructure bill that would cover childcare, affordable housing, medical leave. Yeah, those are the big items. Actually, I don't think it's 3.5 trillion. I think it's 3.5 billion, is that right, Mayor Myers?
It might be trillion.
Billion, okay. I didn't put it.
No, billion, sorry. It is billion.
Yeah, I thought I got that incorrect. So those were the big items in the Metro Board. The Community Programs Committee did meet, but I won't really, I won't report on that since it's an agenda item, so what we discussed is what's on the agenda. And although this isn't a formal committee, myself and Mayor Myers and Vice Mayor Brunner have been working on a racial equity resolution and have continued to meet with members of the Asian-American Pacific Islander community and members of the Bell Pot community to look at specific actions we can take in the city and partnerships that we can have to fight against hate and address inequities and uplift our community. So those are my reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Conteri Johnson. I will go now to Councilmember Watkins.
I was just looking at the list of, I think my colleagues have pretty much covered everything that I was going to touch on, like we had, like Councilmember Conteri Johnson just shared, we will have the core update this afternoon, and what Vice Mayor Brunner shared in regards to Visit Santa Cruz County. The only addition would be that they're still in the process of a search for a new executive director for that agency, and will share any updates as we learn more. And a number of my meetings are actually scheduled for the next couple of weeks, so I don't think I have anything additional to add at this point.
Okay, thank you, council member. I've just got a couple of quick things. I'll just follow up on some of the Metro items. I did, I think there was some questions a few months ago in terms of complete service with regards to when UCSC comes back. I did get some information from, from Metro that all routes are going to be fully operational starting now, and especially Routes 15 and 22, which were suspended in the spring of 2020, those will be reactivated and fully, fully operational now, basically starting September 16th through December 8th. Metro also is rolling out the first four electric buses countywide. Two are dedicated to the Metro's new zero emission Watsonville Circulator Route, and then two will run on route throughout Santa Cruz County. So this is the first of 12 buses, I believe, we have programmed that will, electric buses that will be brought out and begin running routes. And then finally, for members of the community listening today, the Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce and the Coalition for Clean Air and Metro have gone together and are going to be offering free fares countywide on fixed route and pericrew service for Clean, California Clean Air Day on October 6th. Get more information by visiting cleanairday.org and take the Clean Air Pledge that day and get out and use transit so that your impact on the environment will be lessened that day. My other report outs will be on the City Select Committee, which is a meeting of the four mayors and the county, with the county every quarter. One topic of conversation which some council members may have been contacted on recently in the last few months was the status of the Senior Center in Live Oak. We did get a report out that the school district is not planning to do the housing development at this point in time that was potentially going to move the Senior Center off, Senior Center off of that site in Live Oak. So at this point, the school district is not pursuing that workforce housing development, as far as I understand. So that is still, you know, apparently the Senior Center is going to be available for a while longer, which was not anticipated earlier this year. The last one I'll report out on is the 3CE, Community Choice Energy, which now, as folks know, stretches all the way to Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. Attended three, three meetings between August and mid-September, and main takeaways from those were they did pass a temporary nine-month rate structuring, rate structure change due to increasing costs of electricity, basically because of the Texas shutdown. So we did pass a nine-month rate adjustment that will expire in nine months. We adopted that, and it would become operational in September. We had a, we had an annual meeting September 15th, and I would encourage anyone that's interested in the work of 3CE to look at that. There were some excellent presentations from both the CCA leadership in Sacramento in terms of lobbying information. There was also some very good presentations on how 3CE anticipates actually being able to accomplish its zero emission goals in really much more sooner, I think, than most of us had expected. And so some really good news on that was presented, looking towards 2030 as a potential timeline where we could be close to zero emissions in terms of electricity provided through, to 3CE customers. And on, on September 16th, the Policy Board met to adopt the fiscal year 21, 22 budget. And again, that was also a good meeting. There was quite a bit of request from organizations and individuals throughout the 3CE service area to increase the program's budget, and that was, that was allocated in the, in the budget for this year, including a lot of the information, or excuse me, a lot of the programs that help with purchasing EV vehicles, doing, providing more charging stations, zero emission school bus electrification, new construction electrification grant program, obviously education and community grants. So a lot of programmatic investment. The Board and the Policy Board continues to press for even more investment in those types of programs, and we hope to continue that conversation into next year. The one thing I will say is that Santa Cruz is often recognized, the city is often recognized as one of the first cities, if not the first city in the 3CE area, that has a building electrification ordinance in place. We're often pointed to, to, as a city that's done it, and many of the jurisdictions are encouraged to follow our lead on that. So we get a bit of recommendation that way. And yeah, the annual meeting was really good, and I would again encourage anyone in the public who wants to track the work of the Central Coast Community Energy to take a look at that for evaluation in terms of outcomes from the last several years from the, from the agency. And with that, I will finish my reports, and we will move on to our next item.
Mayor Myers, Mayor Myers, can I ask a quick question about 3CE? Sorry to interrupt, but I'm just curious, you know, because I've been hearing kind of outside of the 3CE framework, talking with people about the challenges that presented ongoing, I mean, this is an ongoing issue, the challenges presented at the state level for 3CEs. And so I'm just wondering if you, if there's anything new related to what's happening at that level, because it is very much a concern for folks involved in, you know, solar energy production, people who are looking at distributed energy and storage, and, you know, how 3CEs are going to kind of navigate, you know, what's happening in Sacramento. So if you have any update on that, it would be great. If not, next time.
Yeah, we, we did receive a, actually an extensive report from the, from the, you know, basically the lobbyists that reference the CCAs throughout the, and they, you know, we are still positioning ourselves as a player, and, you know, there's frankly, you know, a lot of the big, a lot of the big providers are seeing the CCAs, you know, as sort of a threat to their future. So many of the CCAs are getting out and getting really competitive purchase agreements done with, you know, clean energies and things that, so we're able to get, you know, we're, what she explained is that we're, we're getting, we're getting into the game and getting into long-time contract agreements, which, again, as the larger energy providers are kind of looking at the CCAs maybe as a place where, you know, they need to back us up a little bit. There was one CCA that did have to file for bankruptcy this, were not able to, with the, the different types of, really with the spikes in energy costs, Councilmember Brown, over the last year, they were not able to basically meet, you know, their obligations in their purchasing agreements. And so they were, they did, they were their first CCA, and I, I'm sorry, but I can't remember offhand exactly which one it was, but they were able to, they unfortunately had to, to, to basically file for bankruptcy, and, you know, their rate, their rate, and their customers are basically trying to kind of understand what, how that plays out. But you're right, the, it's not all favorable, and there is a big push to try to kind of keep these, I guess what I learned is a little bit more on a cottage industry type of scale rather than, you know, making a major dent in California energy purchasing and production. So I think the next couple of years will be, and then also protecting C, you know, CCAs from, from bankruptcy productions and rate, you know, rate, rate changes and things like that. So a lot of, a lot of focus on that in terms of legislation for next year, to try to keep CCAs as viable as possible. So I think 3CE is definitely pointed to as a, you know, as an important 3C, CCA that's been very successful. And so again, having some really good models out there has been helpful, but it's still a legislative push to keep CCAs viable. So hopefully that helps. There was a really good, probably about a 25-minute presentation from the lobbyists, which definitely worth looking at. It was very, very well done. So not a lot of details there for you, but still, still fighting the fight, unfortunately.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Sounds like we're hanging in there and well, more, more to come.
Yeah. And a lot of push from our own, you know, organizations and nonprofits around in the, in the, just in the area that, you know, the 3CE area that continue also to want to, you know, as I said earlier, really want to make sure that the investments are coming in from the programmatic side as well. So not only just from the energy generation and purchasing, but also really working, you know, with people and families, you know, individually to really get them to wrap their heads around the, the one shift that I think we will be moving to and investing in in terms of some of the local companies is really the, the storage aspect of what needs to be done. So that's going to be a big push, and that will hopefully help with some of our local businesses being able to have, you know, that, to, 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 to put that energy, you know, those, that energy use into storage systems that can be dispersed, so. And obviously with what's going on in the center of the valley right now, Bruce McPherson's got his eyes on that very, very clearly in terms of maybe a potential role for 3CE. So good work on that. Okay. Next up, we've got Agenda, our Consent Agenda, and these are items nine through 14 on our agenda today. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, now is the time to call in if you want to comment on items nine through 14. There will be instructions on your screen, and please remember to mute your streaming device by pressing, and then press, excuse me, star nine to raise your hand. You'll listen for the cue when I call your name, and you will be unmuted at that time. All items in the consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. Are there any council members who want to pull, comment on or pull any items on our consent agenda today? Not seeing any hands at this point. I just have a question on item 12. I just have a question on item 12. I mostly just have a question and I see Tiffany Lake is listed as a contact, so I'll give a minute to see if, this is the Red Cross Housing Reconstruction Loan Payment, Approval of Funding for Operation of the Nueva Vista Community Center and to Assist Residents of the City of Santa Cruz Under the Emergency Rent Program. Bonnie or Tiffany, are you here? Or Jessica's here? Jessica, are you here?
Yeah, I did, yes.
Okay, I just have a quick question. I just want to make sure for the public on this item, that it's, you know, just known kind of the intent of this item, which, and Jessica, correct me if I'm not right here, but this is authorizing $11,000 per year for three years for, with the Community Action Board to assist renters in the Beach Flats area with emergency rental assistance. And that will include payment of, I believe, I think first and last. But Jessica, I just wanted to see maybe if you could just clarify, the other part of this, of this item is to support the Nueva Vista with operation, operational funding of $25,000 per year for three years, which is amazing and great. I just wanted to make sure that if anyone in Beach Flats or in the community is looking for rental assistance, I just want to make sure that they understand that this is also available kind of post, that, you know, sort of some of the, the state stuff that's going on. So this sounds like this will be a secured three-year program with $11,000 a year. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And this is actually an existing contract. It's just that it expired this year, so we're renewing it for another three to four years, depending on how much money we have left over. So this money has been going annually to these programs and we're just trying to extend that further out.
Okay, great, great. Well, that's good news. So thank you for bringing that forward. Okay, without any items being pulled today, I will go ahead and look for, first I'll see if any members of the public would like to speak to any item on our consent agenda. We not, have not had any items pulled today. So if you are here to speak to any items on our consent agenda, go ahead and please star nine to raise your hand, your hand, excuse me. I have not seen any members in the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda today. So I will go ahead and look for a motion on the consent agenda, which are items number nine through 14 today. I see Councilmember Calentari Johnson. Thank you, I'd like to move to approve the items on the consent agenda. And Councilmember Cummings?
One second, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Calentari Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Cummings to approve items number nine through 14 on our consent agenda. Ask the clerk to please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings? Member Golders absent.
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to move on to item number 15, which is the core investments. For members of the public, core investment stakeholder engagement and RFP framework recommendations. This is item number 15 on our agenda. For members of the public who are streaming, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from the council. We will then take public comment and then return to the council for deliberation and action. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to Ralph Demerica, the Principal Management Analyst, our Principal Management Analyst with City Manager's Office.
Hi. Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Myers and members of the City Council. Ralph Demerica, Principal Management Analyst, as am I, as mentioned, for the City Manager's Office. And I am going to go ahead and share my screen with you all. I am here today to give you an update on the conference. And I have 15 slides for you, including this one. Up onto the next one. Here's our agenda for this presentation. I'm going to provide a quick review of core funding, the process and timeline, the stakeholder engagement process and participants, staff recommendations and what the next steps are. And I'm also joined by Director Morris. And this item was heard at the County Board of Supervisors this morning. However, this presentation, my presentation of the backup material was put together before this morning, the Board of Supervisors meeting. So if there are any updates or anything that you'd like to try and, Director Morris, please feel free to do so, I invite you to do so. And members may have some questions for either you or I at the end of this presentation as well. But thank you for being here today. So a little bit of background on core. As many of you and probably all of you know, in 2015, the Board of Supervisors approved a phased-in approach to transition from the historical community programs funding model to a results-based collective model. And in doing so, directed HSD, Human Services Department, to lead a design and implementation process. And after extensive research and collaboration with a wide variety of stakeholders, HSD, the HSD community program funding process was transformed into a new model, which is the core funding model that we know now. The first RFP under this in 2017. And in that model, the county put in 4.1 million and had an additional $150,000 for set-aside awards. And the city, the city's base funding was around $1, $1 million. It's approximately a million dollars, $1,035,000 and with an additional $45,000 set-aside awards annually. And it was a three-year term and it was extended twice through the three-year 2021 and 2022. So fast forwarding to today and where we are today with sort of today's cycle, what we're presenting to you is really this timeline of how we've been preparing for the next RFP to go out. What we will be discussing more thoroughly in my presentation is really the part, the summer 2021 and fall 2021 section. But as you can see in this, planning started at, at the county, at the county level with HSD and their, and the coal, and coal communications. And they throughout summer worked with different partners in the community to do a lot of outreach and really get community feedback on, but a member of the community liked last, last cycle and what we can improve on and input they had was really putting together this framework that we're presenting to you today. And then we presented this sort of engagement process to the CTC group in June and for as well. And then today, we're presenting this framework to you and we'll be back in November with the actual RFP. So zooming in a little bit more on that summer and fall window. The city over the summer was invited to a series of meetings that was hosted by the County HSD and, and we met with funders and community partners to gather input on how to apply the core framework and operate operationalized equity in this process. So funded meetings were held and there were 29 participants from 17 agencies. And we, CPC had an initial meeting with HSD and their consultants, kind of what was going to be talked about at these engagement meetings and all that. Further community meetings were held. Eighteen participants from 54 agencies gathered for these meetings. And then a survey was put out and we had less respondents from nine agencies. We met with funders and partners as well. And it, and the consultants presented to the Human Service Commission in the fall. And we also went back to CPC in the fall to kind of give an update on where these discussions landed. The purpose of these meetings was really to provide an opportunity to build a shared of the core, core framework and to deepen connections, communication and opportunities for alignment, for collective impact among funders and community partners. And additionally, those that attended the engagement sessions were offered an option to submit comments via survey. And a summary of the stakeholder engagement process was included in your backup material in attachment number two. And these meetings, funders and service providers were asked a lot of questions, but these were the two big questions that all of us were asked to provide feedback on. One was, how can the core framework be used for making decisions about funding allocations? And the second, how can we enter, how can we center equity in the core funding process in concrete and actionable ways for both funders and service providers? And as, you know, as is mentioned in attachment two, there were varying ideas. These were really complicated questions and there's a, a lot of stakeholders involved in these discussions. So yeah, the feedback we got varied and however, there was appreciation for how complex that answering these questions was and how the operationalized core framework into the procurement process. And with regard to equity, some of the key feedback included making equity part of the scoring criteria and to recognize that equity is an ongoing process and applicants shouldn't be penalized for learning how to work on X. Some common themes regarding the application included keeping the application simple and streamlined, having a different process for small versus large funding requests and recognition that simplicity isn't always as easy as it seems and it still requires effort for both the funder and applicant. So based on review of the lessons learned from the evaluation of the last procurement, the recent stakeholder engagement meeting and discussion with HSD staff, I, I am presenting. So following recommendations today for council to consider. And again, today we're really just approving high, sort of high-level, but we're, we're asking for direction to, for how to move forward with RFP process in November, just trying to get some approval for this framework so that we can come back to you in November with the actual RFP. But the staff recommendations today are to approve core, the core investment contract term for another three years. And this would align us with the county's efforts as well. And the, the three-year term was approved at this year's County Board of Supervisors meeting. Direct staff to return on November nine with the core RFP and an update on the application process, technical assistance for applicants, review panels and scoring of award funding decisions and process. And lastly, what I'll get any more detail about is to consider core investment allocation methods and funding options and provide direction and. Those are the funding options to consider and then, and we'll go into allocation methods. The recommendation or that staff is putting forward today first has to do with the set-aside funds that the last five years, well, the, the first three years, we had $45,000 set-aside annually and we invited organizations to apply for these set-aside funds. The recommendation is to roll the set-aside funds over into the base fund and to not have that annual application process moving forward, but to actually just roll it into the, the overall process this year. And that includes creating a tiered approach for the funding awards, having all medium and large buckets that organizations could apply for. And that way you kind of, you keep the steer of those set-aside, the smaller set-aside grant funds in, into, in the process with the small bucket over here. And then this small, medium, large for separation of applications will tie into the allocation recommendation that I'll get inside. And the third funding option to consider is to determine the feasibility of increasing the city's base funding to join the county's efforts to fund deeper separate investments. This morning, the County Board of Supervisors did approve to increase their base funding by $500,000. So it, it's something that the council and, you know, the city may consider doing is looking at our base fund and see if there is room to increase that or not. And then the allocation method options, and this is sort of the big question for today. After the feedback from the engagement meetings and all of that, we, staff sat back and determined there are really three ways to move forward with how to allocate this funding in this RFP cycle. The first option is a target approach and that's to fund in a targeted manner, identify specific inequities to address in order to move the needle on targeted core conditions. The benefit of this approach is that it increases the likelihood of impact in targeted conditions and recognizing that there are these fewer programs that are funded with larger awards. So city and HSD staff today is not recommending this approach because, well, we, we don't have sufficient data, the condition to target. And this approach would reduce funding for agencies and services not connected to the targeted core conditions. And staff does recognize that as part of the evolution of core, this could be a more viable option in the future. Option two of the broad approach is very similar to what we're doing now or what we did five years ago. And that's to fund broadly across all core conditions. And this approach mirrors how funds are currently allocated and acknowledges the interconnectedness of the core conditions. The benefit of the broad approach is that it recognizes that all the core conditions have been identified as key aspects of the thriving community and it supports many programs and services being offered. Limitation is that distributing limited funding across many programs and services results in smaller awards and potentially less of the impact. Staff is not recommending this approach for this funding cycle as it does not provide the impact envisioned for core. So option three, which is a hybrid approach, which did come up at one of the CTC meetings, I think the last CTC meeting it was brought up. And that's to find out the high, it's primarily broad, but it would also include one deeper investment. And this option acknowledges both the need for a phase transition from funding safety net services broadly and the impact of deeper investments. This approach requires that a portion of the funds available for award be targeted toward one larger investment. And as a consequence, we anticipate that fewer programs may be funded. So the funds for this deeper investment would be separate from the large grant size tier described earlier. So with this approach, there would actually be four tiers, the three tiers described earlier and then this one jungle cap. Currently, well, in my, in my backup material here, I have currently HSD recommending to the County Board of Supervisors that 500,000 of county funds be directed towards this auction. And that recommendation was approved this morning with the County Board of Supervisors. And for this investment- And for this investment, collective impact features would be built into the funding expectations and RFP criteria. And in addition, the proposals will be expected to explicitly address equity as both a process and an outcome. So option three, the hybrid approach is what staff is recommending right now, and that was the approach that was approved by the county board of supervisors this morning. So here is sort of a closer look at that hybrid approach when you break it down a little bit more to see where the funding goes towards. The, we will, with this approach, there will be three buckets, small, medium, and large that will be funded in percentages that mirror basically how those buckets have been funded in the past. So we didn't have these specific buckets in the last round, but these percentages reflect the similar sort of distribution that occurred in the last round. But then with option three, the hybrid approach, you add this collective impact line over here where it shows the seven hundred fifty thousand going towards that fund. And this, so this, the county funds were approved this morning. And over here, it shows sort of how the city's million dollars and thirty-five, one million thirty-five thousand dollars will be allocated to the small, medium, and large funds. So our next step, we are planning to have another stakeholder engagement meeting in mid-October to get additional feedback on the application process, technical assistance for applicants, review panels and scoring, award funding decisions, and all of that, and to give our partners in the community an additional option to be involved in those decision-making efforts. And then we'll be back November nine to present the RFP to the board and Santa Cruz City Council for approval and release. And proposals will be due early to mid-February. And then in May, we were scheduled to present award recommendations to the board and Santa Cruz City Council. So one more time, these are the staff recommendations that we are presenting to you today, and it's to approve core investment, a contract term of three years, direct the staff to return on November nine with an update on the application process, technical assistance for applicants, review panels and scoring, and award funding decisions process. And then some direction that we were looking to council to today was, you know, does option three sound like a good approach? Is a tiered approach acceptable for council if that's the right way to move forward? Is it, are you guys on board with rolling the set aside funds into the funding? Or should we keep those separated and should we continue to have an annual process for them? And do we, does the city want to look at the feasibility of joining the county and increasing our base funding? Those are sort of the major questions that are up in the, that, you know, we were looking for direction for today. So that concludes my presentation and I'm available for you to have. And I believe Director Morris is still here to take around your questions for the county.
Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, thank you, Randy, for being here today. Good to see you. Okay, I will look to see if there's any questions from council on this item at this time before taking it out to public comment. I have a couple of quick questions, but I don't see any of my colleagues have any at this point. So one thing I noted, first of all, it's, you know, I compliment us and the county as our partner in this, you know, and the increase that the county's proposing, you know, this is, I mean, this is about six million dollars we're investing back into our community into these really critical services. So I want to first off, thank the county and thank you for your leadership in increasing the amount this year. I think as we recover from COVID and all the other myriad of things that are going on, I really appreciate that investment and because what benefits, folks in the county benefits our folks as well. So thank you, Randy, for your leadership on that. And it's an impressive amount of money between a small county and a small city to, you know, to provide to, to our community members. I was wondering during all of the different outreach that was done during that time, do you, I'm just curious more than anything else, is there, are you also working, for example, with private foundations at the same time? And I'm thinking about the Community Foundation in particular. Is there a, is there sort of a leveraging kind of plan or not? Or I'm just curious about how their funds and support, do they, does that, is there any kind of match or types of work that's done, I guess is my question, with the Community Foundation?
Ralph, do you want me to cover that one?
Yes, please.
Well, first, in this surreal video environment, it's actually really nice to see you all. I look forward to actually being in your literal house someday and seeing you in person. But, and also, you know, thank you to Ralph. He got thrown into this process with no experience and almost as if we've been meeting every week for the last three months. Ralph, your presentation was lock and step with ours this morning. So Mayor Myers, yes, we invited both Pahravale Trust and Community Foundation to all of the meetings. And I was specifically approved by Susan True, the Community Foundation Director, to make a general in the board materials that were public and shared this morning. And I was approved by her as long as it was very clear there's been no final decisions, which I did verbalize that we have a meeting, we, county with Community Foundation specifically, end of this week because we see a mission alignment with what came up in our meetings from them as a funder with community providers expressing deep appreciation for their shift in how they fund, small pockets of money, streamlined simplified applications, and a deep focus on equity. So that was a piece of why we recommended this tiered approach, in part so that we could implement what we heard was valued by the community and the community providers. So what this is, there's been conceptual agreement, and Susan's point was, please make sure if you make a public comment, I haven't talked to my board, it's just a meeting. There's a conceptual agreement that it might be worth brading funding from the Community Foundation with the county and city, if your board approved or your council approved this, to look at those small grants and have a partnership to expand the small grant dollar amounts and work with them. And we would come back to our board and through your staff, to your council with that proposal on November ninth, if indeed these meetings lead to a commitment to investment, and it would include in it how they would be part of the review process. So we are hopeful, but again, Susan, it is conceptual and she needs to run it through the process, but that's, that's where we are with that, that's responsive.
Thank you. No, that's exactly what I was hoping to hear. I mean, I think that all the work we've been doing on homelessness and raising, you know, public dollars to match, and, you know, that's an area, I think, that's ripe for exploration, but I think also the Community Foundation did such an outstanding job with COVID and with fire response. They're just becoming that private foundation partner, I hope, for the future. And so I think that leveraging is really great to hear you guys are talking. It's, I think, the amount of money coming at from, from local government is very impressive. And I think, you know, donors appreciate those partnership approaches. So really excited that that's happening and hopefully we'll see more from you guys on that. That's really my question, main question on it. And if there's no other questions from council members on this, I will go ahead and I just also want to recognize the community, the committee, the council committee members who worked on this. I know you guys put in a lot of time, so it looks really great. So thank you for doing that work. I will go ahead and take this out to the public at this time. This is for item number fifteen on our agenda today, which is the core investment stakeholder engagement and request for proposal framework recommendations. And if you are interested in speaking to this item, if you could please press star nine to, and when is your time to speak, we'll unmute you. I'm not seeing any hands raised today in the audience regarding this. So again, I'll bring it back to council for a motion. And again, I just want to thank Randy and Ralph and the council members who worked on this and just amazing amount of, hopefully, investment that helps community programming throughout Santa Cruz County ahead of us here. I saw council member, I think you guys all raised your hands right at the right, right at the same time. So I'll go ahead and recognize Councilmember Brown and then Councilmember Watkins.
Actually, was gonna go after Councilmember Calentari Johnson and Councilmember Watkins.
Okay, we can do that.
They have the motion prepared. I just have a couple of comments, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Thank you. I want to first thank Ralph and all of your work on this. I know you've worked super hard over them on this, on this program. And I want to thank Randy and your team and everyone at the county, as Mayor Myers said, on your leadership. It's, it's really wonderful to be on this side of it as a grant writer. I've written grant proposals for the core funding, so to, to help guide the decision-making process and invest in our community in this way is really meaningful. I really want to acknowledge our service providers. They are always there to serve those who are most in need, and certainly they've been there and then some over the last year and a half. They invest tremendously in our community, and I'm so glad that our city and our community, our county take this opportunity to invest back in them. So I think those are just the comments I wanted to make. This is just, this is such a fun part of being a council member. I'm so thrilled that we are hopefully going to be making this investment. And with that, I did work with council members Watkins and Brown, my colleagues on the Community Programs Committee, to put forward a motion. And if Bonnie, if you wouldn't mind putting that up. So the motion is to approve the recommendation of the core investment term of three years, pursue core investment allocation method option three, which is the hybrid approach that is primarily broad but would also include one deeper investment. I did want to add here that we want to ensure that the deeper investment is also serving community members who reside in the city of Santa Cruz. Motion to fold our forty-five thousand set aside allocations into core investment base funding and use this set aside as a means of increasing our base funding. And then fourth item here is to direct staff to return on November ninth, twenty twenty-one with core RFP and an update on the application process, technical assistance for applicants, review panels and scoring, and award funding decisions process. So that's the motion put forward. I would also like to just ask that we do explore what increasing our base funding to ten percent would look like and come back and have that on November ninth. That doesn't need to be part of the motion language, but I would like us to explore that for the next time we come together on this. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Watkins.
I'll go ahead and second the motion and then if maybe I could just make a few comments right now, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, great. I too just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Calentari Johnson, for all the thought and effort put into this. Colleagues Ralph and Randy at the county and then Nicole, who aren't here with us today. This wasn't always an easy process, I will just say. It was really challenging to switch from a really known, sort of in the community model to a new way of doing funding allocations. And I was really encouraged to hear that the Community Foundation is interested in partnering with us, is truly collective impact in a way that I think we want to see it play out in regards to really moving the needle on some of these really big social issues we're trying to address. So that is really encouraging and I appreciate you sharing that with us today, Randy, and for being here. And just in general, just want to acknowledge how important, as Councilmember Calentari Johnson brought up, having our safety net providers supported in, to meet the needs of the community in ways that we cannot. And really want to thank the thought that went into the evolution of this process, essentially moving from sort of a one-size-fits-all to really thinking about it as a tiered approach, really embracing equity in that way. And, and I feel, although I know it's not perfect, it's definitely been very responsive to community needs, to, to program needs and provider needs, and is a continuous kind of improvement process that I think we can be really proud of. So I'm, I'm happy to go in this direction and happy to second the motion and just my appreciation to everybody who was involved in getting us to this point.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll echo all of those comments, expressing my appreciation for the staff at the city and county who have been involved in this, our consultants who have been working on this, kind of carrying, you know, navigating us through this over the five-year period. And, you know, just, just really applaud the, all of that work. And also, thanks to my Community Programs Committee colleagues, Councilmember Calentari Johnson and Watkins. I, you know, this, as Councilmember Watkins suggests, this has not been easy. There are, there continue to be challenges and, you know, we hear from service providers about the issues that they face, kind of independently of this particular process, just the challenges that, that we have. So I want to send a huge thank you to them as well, as Councilmember Calentari Johnson suggested. And, you know, and just say that we know that there is a lot more work to do. This is, I think we're making an important step here in responding to the last round and trying to figuring our, our way forward. Absolutely thrilled the Community Foundation is interested in being more actively involved in, because I think that their, their focus on, you know, really how to support resource, you know, under-resourced organizations and do more of the, you know, interactive and iterative fund development, you know, going through that process rather than just, you know, fill out the application, get it in, and well, you know, score you on a, on a score sheet. So there's, you know, there's like all of these really, really, you know, important programs that are getting funded, that have been funded historically, and there have been challenges. I mean, I just want to put it out there for the, just for the council and also for people who are listening. The decision to fold the set aside funds into the general fund for, for core is, I think it's a, it's, you know, I support that right now at this point. And, you know, it, in the, in the previous round, it was very helpful for, at least for my Councilmember Watkins, if you have anything you want to add, please do. To be able to be nimble, to address some of the gaps, emerging needs, and then gaps where, and I think for seniors and, and children's programs in particular, where they didn't quite fit into the categories that had been established or there was a reduced funding and in some way that, you know, kind of multiply challenged some of those organizations, particularly the ones who get matching grants. So, you know, we were able to use that funding to kind of like fix some of the things that were, you know, that didn't work out quite as we had hoped. And so given that we're kind of in this next phase now, I, I do hope that we will, will look at, and I understand we have our own resource challenges and fiscal challenges, but that we can seriously consider how to make this a priority for increasing that pot of funding and working, you know, making an additional contribution. I'm, I'm so glad the county is providing leadership on that. Thank you, Randy, and your team. And so, you know, so there's, there's a lot more to do, but I think moving in is, is wonderful and I'm looking forward to seeing how things play out in this next round. And, and, you know, and another thing that I want to say just really quickly because, you know, the service providers, you know, it's their, it's a nonprofit workforce in our community. These are people who, you know, have, who work and many of us have been in those jobs there, know, you know, you don't get paid a lot, it's a struggle to live in a community like this, and we have, we are so lucky to have a robust community of service providers and people who are willing to step up. And, you know, I really want to be involved in this conversation as we look towards ways to, to bolster, you know, the nonprofit workforce as well. So I'll leave it there. There's, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, really cool stuff happening in the, in the middle of all of this too. So I look forward to working with you all moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Great comments. I think the only place you'd make less money is on the City Council. A dollar forty-three an hour is kind of what I think it's kind of about. You get to. Well, thank you again to all the councilmembers that worked on this. We do have a motion and a second. I see Vice Mayor Brunner.
I just wanted to say I really enjoyed learning and reading about the core investment and thinking about it as a funding model for our safety net services and really as a means in investing and addressing our, our community needs. So thank you to everyone that worked on this, and I just wanted to express appreciation as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, we have a motion that's up on the screen here by Councilmember Calentari Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Watkins, and that is to approve the recommendation for the core investment term of three years to pursue the hybrid approach, but also include one deeper investment and ensure that the deeper investment is serving community members who reside in the city of Santa Cruz. Third part of the motion is to fold 45,000 of the set-aside allocations into the core investment-based funding, and then direct staff to return on November 9th with core RFP and an update on the application process, technical assistance for applicants, review panels and scoring, and award decisions process. Bonnie, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Golda, I believe, is still absent. Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, everybody. Good to see you, Randy. Okay, we will now move on to our next general business item, and this is item number 16. It's City Cannabis Tax Children's Fund. This is a budget adjustment, and I will provide, turn this over to the staff in a moment. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from the council. We will then take public comment and then return to the council for deliberation and action. So if you are interested in this, you'll want to press star nine on your phone, and then when I turn it out for public comment. And welcome up, I'll welcome up Lindsay Bass, the Principal Management Analyst for Parks and Recreation Department. Hi, Lindsay.
Hi, councilmembers. I'm going to let Tony make a few comments, and then I will begin a short presentation for you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and to the councilmembers. For the record, Tony Elliott, Director of Parks and Recreation, and yeah, Lindsay Bass, our Principal Management Analyst with Parks and Rec, will give the bulk of the presentation today. So the item before council today is our appropriation request for the Children's Fund. The Children's Fund, as the council knows, is 12.5% of our cannabis tax. And so we have pretty clear, I'd say really clear direction in terms of how that Children's Fund is to be used. So our appropriation today, or the request for the council today, is consistent with that previous council direction in terms of the split for those funds. And this is also consistent with the City Schools Committee that we meet with on a quarterly basis, cited us on use of these funds. So just wanted to provide that high-level context. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Lindsay for a short presentation on our specific requests for today.
Fantastic. Thank you, Tony, and you should all be able to see my screen. This table, summary table, is included in your packet, and I thought it might be helpful just to walk you through a few of the particulars around the cannabis tax Children's Fund allocation that can be a little confusing. So just to review, we do receive 12.5% of the cannabis tax fund revenues that are audited each year. Audit means that we tend to program in the following fiscal year. So once those funds are audited and we know the actual amount that is there, we then seek the appropriation. And so what's on the screen is how those funds have historically been utilized. You'll notice that the funds have been growing as we've moved forward in time. And starting in with the FY19 allocation, that fiscal year 19 that was programmed in FY20, right during pretty intense critical COVID responses for families and youth. We moved with the 50/50 split, as Tony mentioned, to support early childhood education, to Thrive by Three, as well as 50% to our Friends of Parks and Recreation nonprofit that provides scholarships for financially impacted families and vulnerable youth. So you can see here the benefits and impacts of that funding, and just wanted to reinforce that the Children's Fund is really an investment in the future. And the resources, whether they're going to early childhood development or to vulnerable youth through scholarships, really do provide critical win at the backs of families when it's most needed. So we've received testimonials from our FOPAR group in terms of the impact of those scholarships, and you can see some of those here, as well as the benefits of just that FY20 fund utilized by these two partner groups that we work so closely with, benefiting nearly 300 kids. That doesn't include, you know, the families that also benefit from them being engaged, having programs to go to, having some consistency, being able to go to work, bring home a paycheck, as well as the early childhood centers that benefited from these resources as well. So just a lot of great results from the investment of these resources to date, and I just wanted to review with you the appropriation that we are recommending today. So again, this is for fiscal year 20. We will program the funds in fiscal year 22, actually. So that's a little bit of an error there, but the audited amount that we have in front of us is for 176,000, 272, which will yield just over 88,000 to, to different areas, so early childhood development and then also to vulnerable youth. In the conversations with partners and through the department's programming, we're also having some really rich conversations about, you know, how we measure impact of these funds, so thinking about direct beneficiaries of the kids that we're supporting, understanding the composition of that population, making sure that we're tracking age, race, ethnicity, language preferences, as well as the indirect beneficiaries, so families that are supported as well, and the number of sites that are receiving this kind of support. So, so it's not a massively substantial amount of funds today. Those funds are incredibly impactful. We don't want to place too many reporting requirements on our partners, but we do want to make sure that we are looking at how these funds are helping and impacting the beneficiaries of the program. And with that, I will leave it with the staff recommendation, and we welcome any questions or comments that you have. Happy to clarify anything.
Thank you, Lindsay. I will go ahead and see if there are, I think, councilmembers with questions at this time. I'm not seeing, oh, Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you all for that presentation. I have somewhat related questions in the cannabis tax and the Children's Fund being discussed. Since, and this, and this might not be for Parks and Rec staff, this might be for clerk or other staff, but since, since the, the sales tax measure didn't go on the ballot, I was just kind of curious when the tax fund was supposed to be put on the ballot, if that was going to occur this year or next year, because I know that we were at one point going to have that coincide with the recall election, which has now passed, and then I wasn't sure if it was going to be a special election specifically for that or if it was going to be put on another general election. So I was wondering if somebody could speak to that, because I've heard conflicting messaging from members of the public and wanted to make sure that this was clear, what direction the, the next cannabis tax measure is going on.
So thanks for that question, Councilmember Cummings. I'm going to ask Bonnie Bush to respond.
Thank you. Yeah, back in June, council adopted a resolution to place this on the November 2nd, 2021 ballot. So it's Measure A. There is a website, there is a page on our website dedicated to Measure A. So it is, it's technically not considered a special election because it is a designated date. The question was always, is it consolidated because other agencies in the county might not have stuff to put on the ballot, which is where the whole cost came in, because we can't split the cost with anyone. So that was the debate, but it is on November 2nd, 2021.
And then what are the costs associated with that, just in case we get inquiries from them?
Just want to make sure we're not, this, I'm, I think we're getting into an area where we're talking about something that's not on the agenda, but I'll look to Tony or Tony's. I'm not trying to shut down the conversation, but I'm just want to make sure we're not talking about.
I can also just send you an email, an email.
That'd be great.
Councilmember Cummings with, with the answer.
That's fine.
I mean, I think it's a judgment call, but it's, I think council's probably appropriate. I mean, a written update from the, from the city clerk, sorry.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you. Hi. Okay, I will go ahead and take this out to the public if there's no questions from council. We're now on item number 16, which is the City Cannabis Tax Children's Fund Budget Adjustment. And if you are interested in commenting, I'd like you to raise your hand by pressing star nine. I see we have phone number ending in 1810. Go ahead, please. Press star six to unmute yourself, please. We're good to go.
Yeah, this is Garrett. This item suffers from much the same concerns as Measure A placed on the, Measure A is far worse, however, insofar as it flushed a ton of money forever lost down the drain, getting it on the ballot. This policy here automatically earmarks future funds for a specific purpose by a policy here, and worse by charter in Measure A, that forces the very highest priority-specific, somewhat unaccountable spending, possibly forever, and presents obstacles for future equally empowered elected council members to assign their own spending priorities. Is your wisdom permanently superior, no matter what, to that of future electeds? Why? The three and a half trillion Biden Human Infrastructure for Families bill will pass in some form and will make Measure A and this policy look very unnecessary. What's the rush? Do you figure parents are spending too much time smoking the weed instead of caring for their children and you should, they then pay more? Ha ha, or they should pay more? Anyway, a little joke. What other services funded, you don't say? This kind of tax action should at least be an annual recipient performance and achievement standard reviewed allocation, but should not automatically be awarded nor with an automatic fixed tax percentage benefit. This assumes that this funding follows a city's purpose, which I say it does not. The, the city should not take on an outside selective welfare role, adding to the Fed, state, county efforts. It might even attract poverty here. Many budgeted items suffer from the lack of oversight and automatically create an ever bigger unaccountable spending. No one argues that early childhood experiences aren't critically important. Is the government a better parent than parents? Well, not lately, as evidenced by leftist public school curriculum. This is also in great part a welfare affirmative action type assignment, one where city money is not used to provide services for everyone, but goes to a select financial needs majority. I won't go into much how welfare affirmative action type programs immediately devastated black American families after their introduction did lead black women to marry the government and black fathers deciding they didn't need to stick around to raise disciplined children, resulting in a population of illiterate, unsuccessful children, who, by the way, still in poverty in the old set school of government dependence. Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public who would want to speak on item number 16 today? If you do, please star nine. I have not seen any other members. But we will go ahead and, we already have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Calentari Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Watkins, and we will go ahead and, wait, did we get a motion? We didn't get a motion.
We do not have a motion.
I was going to say, wait a minute, you guys are, you guys are doing too much work. I keep seeing the same names coming up here. So I would look for a motion on the item, please. Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Watkins.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move this item, and it's just, I'll say that it's really good to see that, you know, as this tax revenue goes up, that we're seeing more revenue going towards children's programs in the community. And having served on the City Schools Committee, and that we use these funds to help, you know, support scholarships for, for children in our community in the summers, they can go to summer camp and some of the summer programs, and so see how these funds can be put to good use to help children in the community. And so with that, I'll make, I'll, I'll support and move the staff recommendation resolution appropriating the fiscal year 2020 audited amounts of the City Cannabis Tax Children's Fund allocation to Parks and Recreation Department, 50% to the Thrive by Three for early childhood development and 50% to after-school care and scholarships for underserved youth education in Santa Cruz.
Thank you. And motion by Councilmember Cummings. Councilmember Watkins?
I'll second the motion, and I'll just briefly share the comments made by my colleagues in, in regards to the, that this funding provides to our community and to our families, and really extend my gratitude and thanks to our Parks and Rec Department, Lindsay and Tony, our City Schools Committee and FOPAR, as well as the Thrive by Three initiative that has sort of taken on this administrative oversight allocation role without collecting any oversight kind of administrative dollars to do that. And that little bit can go such, in such a, it can go so far for our lives and families in our community, and it's great to see it being used in a way that feels really nimble, but, but so appropriate and, and won't lose its appropriateness as we need to always continue to invest in our kids. So I will gladly second the motion and offer my appreciation and gratitude as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll go ahead and echo, too. I really do think that even though many people say it's, this is not city's job, if we don't invest in the young people that live in our city, it's going to be really hard to, you know, have successful communities. So I really want to recognize the Parks and Recreation programs and the childcare and the after-school care that these funds provide. Those safety net services really help kids, kids be successful, and, and then to top it off with doing things with our rec programs and others, such as, you know, it's just kind of icing on the cake to really take care of our, our youth, which is super important. So Bonnie, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Golda is absent. Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. I know we have a lot of people interested in our next item today. We are running ahead of schedule today, so I'm going to go ahead. I think we had kind of put some start times out to the community, so I'm going to go ahead and have the council take a break. And I think, Bonnie, did you, I don't believe we, we have any. any three-minute speakers. Bonnie, did you do any additional outreach, letting people know when start times, or it looks like a lot of people are tuned in, at least I'm recognizing a lot of the names from some of the communications we've gotten. Bonnie, did anybody contact your office regarding kind of the timing of this particular item? This is the Homeless Garden Project item?
Um, not our office, no, but we did have just a general estimate that could have been shared with people as they called in.
Yeah. So why don't we, Council, why don't we take a 45-minute break? So we will come back at 4:00 PM and we'll start item number 17. So those folks who are in the audience right now, we'll go ahead and take a break so that people who potentially were looking at late, a little bit later in the afternoon that might want to join in this particular agenda item, we'll start back up at 4:00.
Um, really quick, Mayor, just to confirm, you said a 45-minute?
Yeah, what time is it now? I'm sorry, back at 4:00.
Okay.
So we'll, we are adjourned, the Santa Cruz City Council's adjourned until 4:00, and we will take up agenda item number 17 then, and that is the item on the Homeless Garden Project. Thanks, everybody. See you back then. Hi. Does council members can turn on their cameras? Ready to roll?
Uh, yes, we are. We're good.
Okay. Vice Mayor, minute here. Okay, we will go ahead and get started at 4:00. Uh, good afternoon. We're readjourning for item number 17 on our agenda. This is the request from the Homeless Garden Project to amend the Pogonet Master Plan and relocate the side of the planned farm from the Lower Meadow to the Upper Main Meadow in the Pogonet Park open space. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. Please note, public comment will be limited to one hour today, and each person will have one minute to speak. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from the council. We will then take public comment and then return to the council for deliberation and action. I also want to confirm that I did provide three minutes to the Homeless Garden Project today. They will have two speakers who will be using those times, as well as, I believe, Tony, they'll also be part of your presentation, correct? Okay, great. Okay, we will go ahead and get started. I will go ahead and introduce Tony Elliott, the Director of Parks and Recreation, to start us off. And I also see Kathy Calfo is here today. She's with the Homeless Garden Project. So Tony and Kathy, please go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. For the record, Tony Elliott, Parks and Recreation Department. And with me today from Parks and Recreation staff will be Park Superintendent Travis Beck and Parks Planner Noah Downing. And then from the Homeless Garden Project, Kathy Calfo and Executive Director Derry Gantorn will be here as well. What we'll do in terms of the presentation is I will give just a bit of background, and this is background that the council is likely well aware of, shared in previous meetings, but for the purposes of just kind of setting up our agenda item here, I want to give some background. I'll share a little bit of the detail from the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting earlier in the month of September, and then just give a brief, kind of very brief status update on the contamination in the Lower Meadow. And then I'll hand it off to Homeless Garden Project to go through presentation, and then I'll conclude with a few remarks, as well on regarding the process, looking forward, and some of the potential financial impacts. So I've got about 16 or 17 slides here. That includes those from the Homeless Garden Project. So I'll try to move through these, just lead, but, but in a thorough way as well. So thanks for sticking with me here. All right. So I will go ahead and share my screen. All right. Are you able to see my presentation?
Yeah, we can see it, Tony. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So, yeah, by way of background, so I'll just start here. So the city and the Homeless Garden Project have been working together for a long time, over 20 years, to locate the farm, the Homeless Garden Project farm in the Lower Meadow. The project was included in the 1998 Pogonet Master Plan and Environmental Impact Report, which guided development and the use for the property. The city and Homeless Garden Project approved a lease agreement in May of 2017 for the Lower Main Meadow, and a planning permit for the farm complex was approved in September of 2018. The Pogonet farm is planned to include an administrative building, pole barn, storage building, two greenhouses, and nine acres of cultivated land. In 2018, late 2018, Parks and Recreation discovered lead contamination in the Lower Meadow as a result of historic skeet shooting on the property. So in light of the contamination, Homeless Garden Project is seeking an alternative location for the home of its future farm. Included, the packet for city council today is a letter written by the Homeless Garden Project to the city council, which came in July of the summer, with a proposal to amend the Pogonet Master Plan in order to provide an opportunity to move their farm from the Lower Meadow to the Upper Main Meadow. And just to clarify, sometimes it's called the Upper Meadow or the Main Meadow, so we'll kind of use that term interchangeably, the Upper Meadow or Upper Main Meadow today. The proposal from Homeless Garden Project includes suggested text edits to the Pogonet Master Plan and conceptual site maps for the farm in the Upper Meadow. So at its August 24th meeting, unanimously provided direction to do four things. So to direct staff to initiate an amendment process to the Pogonet Master Plan for relocation, only for relocation of the Homeless Garden Project from the Lower Meadow to the Upper Meadow, including outreach, analysis, and studies, and environmental review, to direct staff to place a discussion of the proposed amendment on the September 13th Parks and Recreation Commission Agenda, which we did, and I'll cover that in just a little bit, and to initiate an amendment process as expeditiously as possible and report to the council at its September 28th meeting on how the proposal would be incorporated into department work plans, which is why we're here today, and a report on the amendment status to the council three months. That was the direction from end of August. We're back here today as directed by the council. So we met with the Parks and Recreation Commission on September 13th. The commission reviewed the proposal and the draft master plan amendment process that we put forth. The proposed process is included with the packet today and available for the public. And I'll provide an overview of the detailed contents of that process a little bit later in the presentation. The commission supported the proposed master plan amendment process by a four to two vote. Among the dissenting votes on the commission, concerns were centered primarily around environmental sensitivity of the Upper Main Meadow, impacts to habitat, conflicts with the Pogonet Master Plan's vision for the Upper Meadow to be preserved, and concerns with the time and cost associated with the master plan amendments and related SEQA analysis. In addition, the commission and staff had the opportunity to hear from community members. So among those opposed, additional questions were raised regarding habitat-sensitive environmental resources and also some concerns as well. So all of that correspondence from the commission meeting, as well as correspondence we received for today's meeting, is included with the city council packet. So for the city council and the public, I want to briefly cover the, the status, I'm sorry, okay, here we go. I wanted to briefly just cover the status of the Lower Meadow, where we found contamination in 2018, and just speak a little bit to the process that we are in the midst of. So in August of 2020, the State Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC, evaluated and characterized the contaminants on the property. They provided something called a preliminary endangerment assessment, a PEA, to the city, and it includes the soil testing results, analysis, and recommendations to the city. So the endangerment assessment identified areas that are safe to farm and recommended that a soils management plan be prepared. The Homeless Garden Project began soils management plan or site management plan with its consultant, Weber Hayes. The county, so County Environmental Health has provided guidance that the plan describe how the site will be controlled to ensure that farm workers remain in areas which have been identified as safe to farm. So those controls could include fencing, signage, training. So currently, approximately four and a half acres, 4.5 acres of the Lower Meadow could be farmed without remediation in the immediate term. So I just wanted to flag that, and I'll share a map here in just, just a moment. So in terms of that process on the contamination and potential remediation, Parks and Recreation staff expects a report from our consultant on October 15th, which will further delineate and characterize the lead contamination, which will set us up for the next stages in the planning, dealing with site management and plans for remediation. So we've got a, a process that we will go through related to the contamination in the Lower Meadow. This map, I just wanted to share, it may be difficult to see, I'm not sure how this comes through Zoom exactly, but generally speaking, the area that you can see in yellow or outlined in orange are the contaminated areas. For a little bit of some context, kind of at the bottom of the screen is Golf Club Drive, and you can kind of see it angling up toward the top left of the screen, which is the Pogonet clubhouse. The areas that are in green, there's an area that's about two or two and a half acres at the top of the image, and an area in green at the bottom of the image, about two or two and a half acres. Those are the areas that are not contaminated that combined equal about 4.5 acres. So just wanted, again, to kind of ground the, the conversation in what areas are contaminated and what is, not at this point, but clearly we've got a complex situation that we're going through in a process to address this issue in the Lower Meadow.
Tony, since you have that image up, maybe I'll interject just for the public. There's all, could you tell us what is the difference between something that's in orange versus something that's in yellow? Is that a, is that a criteria of contamination, like one's more contaminated than the other?
Yeah, I would actually invite our Parks Planner, Noah Down, to speak to this. We have two main types of contamination that have been flagged as concerns by County Environmental Health. One is lead from the, the shot from skeet shooting, and the other are called PAHS, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which is a type of carcinogen, is my understanding, from the clay pigeon, from the historic skeet shooting. So I've got Noah on here and would ask Noah to kind of describe the differences between these, and Noah, maybe where some of those, the highest hits came from with those different contaminants.
Yeah, sure. Tony, thank you. So just to walk you through, where you see that the orange levels like B11, B11S, just above West Meadow, just to the east of that would be where the firing area was. And so the orange is the skeet that was flung and shot down, and so that's in kind of an area of a few hundred, the yellow would be where the lead shots kind of carried and fell. And so the highest levels of contamination are around the four to 500-foot range, so EM10, EM11, EM9, that's where you're finding the hits. I've seen, you know, the draft results from the October report be released, which has additional sampling points in the ravine area. And so just towards EM10 in the, in the ravine, you could kind of see a line which represents the highest points of contamination.
Thank you. That's helpful, just so people get the, get the sense of what, what the colors mean. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Noah. All right. With that, I will hand it over to the Homeless Garden Project, over to Kathy and Derry.
I think Derry's going to talk. Thanks, Tony. My name is Derry Gantorn, and I'm the Executive Director of the Homeless Garden Project. On behalf of the Homeless Garden Project, I would really like to extend our thanks to the council members and to the Parks Commission members for your continued support of a permanent home for the Homeless Garden Project. The Homeless Garden Project provides transitional employment and job training for people experiencing homelessness. Over the last seven years, on average, 97% of our graduates have obtained jobs and about 90% buy housing. And I'm really going to just now pass it on to Kathy Calfo. Kathy is our former board president, the co-chair of our suggested capital campaign, and the Chair of the Homeless Garden Project President Committee.
Thank you, Derry. Welcome, Kathy.
Thanks, Derry. I just want to take a minute here, since there's so many people tuning in, but to really, Derry Gantorn, she's been with the project for over 20 years. I've had the opportunity to work with her closely for the last 10, and I've never seen a person with more commitment, more compassion, and more effectiveness when it comes to helping people who are really trying to turn their lives around. So thank you so much, Derry, for everything you do and for making the project the success that it is. I just regret that I, like I said last time, that I'm here at these circumstances. Really appreciate the council's action, the Parks Commission action, and the Parks Department staff's work in helping us sort through the situation we're in. I went through the packet, and there's a lot I could say right now, but I'm reminding myself that this is really the beginning of a process to look and to determine where the best place at Pogonet for the Homeless Garden Project is. So like Tony, because we have an standing audience, I'm going to review a little bit of what I went over last time. I want to review the history of the Homeless Garden Project and Pogonet, share some of the challenges that we've encountered from our perspective, and really urge the council to support the recommendation that the Parks Director is bringing to you today. So next slide is the timeline that we previously shared with you. In 1998, approximately 12 acres in the Lower Meadow, and that's out of 640 acres at Pogonet overall, was evaluated in the Environmental Impact Report and adopted as part of the Pogonet Master Plan. Since 1998, the project under Derry's leadership has really developed its organizational capacity. It's expanded the program. The results that she shared to you, I think, are really unparalleled, probably anywhere that you can think of. She's expanded her budget, built an effective staff, and taken steps to prepare for the project having its first-ever permanent home at Pogonet, where eventually it will be able to triple the number of people it serves. The council, as Tony said, approved a lease of the desert meadow for the Homeless Garden Project back in 2017. After doing a lot of work, we obtained our design permit, a lot of work and a lot of expense for the project from the city in 2018. And in 2019, we moved towards conclusion of the capital fundraising campaign that raised $3.5 million, which I think is possibly a record in this community and really shows the deep support that the project has. We raised We raised that money to invest in the city-owned land at Pogonip to build a permanent home for the Homeless Garden Project, which Tony described, a small administrative center, a barn, and two greenhouses. And we had hoped to have somewhere between nine and 12 acres to farm down the program. As we got ready to break ground in January of 2019, we were ordered to halt construction based on the identification of possible lead contamination that based back to skeet shooting that took place on the property in the 1930s and 40s, and it was never identified as an issue in the master plan or the EIR previously. So that came as a big surprise. Since the discovery, Tony shared with you, the soil tests that have been conducted, I think I would make a little caveat about the term not contaminated. The Homeless Garden Project really, the Board of Directors spent a lot of time evaluating their responsibility to the community, to the trainees, to the thousands of volunteers who volunteer at the project in terms of possibly exposing them to lead. That we were looking at farming was deemed as safe by us based on its meeting the residential standard, but there were members of the Homeless Garden Project Board who feel very strongly that no level of lead is really safe to expose people to. So that's an internal debate that we've had, just as some background. So when we realized that the lower meadow had the contamination, we did go ahead and hire a contractor who looked at it to give us some estimates. The farmland that Tony described seemed potentially viable, albeit there being concerns about the lead. The contractor looked at it with a new lens, running utilities and other things that we would need, particularly water and electrical lines, would involve going through areas that are more highly contaminated. So he was concerned about the overall viability of the site in light of that. So we began to look at the direction of the Homeless Garden Project's possible sites at Pogonip. Again, there's 640 acres of land there, and we're coming at this with the premise that we can identify about 10 that would be a suitable permanent home for the Homeless Garden Project, which was identified as a key element in the original Pogonip Master Plan. So if you go to the next slide, and I think this is important context, especially for people who haven't followed this closely, and I'll say that I was personally surprised as we began the evaluation and were looking at sites. The site that jumped out to us as the most viable at this point is the Upper Meadow site. And the reason we came to that conclusion is that we looked at a comparison of the lower and upper meadow. The building site in the lower meadow is an area that's never been previously developed. The Upper Meadow site that we're looking at is near the old clubhouse, and it's where the tennis courts and the pool were, pool was previously. So it would be putting the administrative center and the ancillary buildings on a site that's already been previously developed. In the comments that you received, there were a lot of comments about the coastal terrace prairie. At the Upper Meadow, we'd be converting about 3.5 acres. In the lower meadow, we've been approved to convert six acres, and we'll be doing some other restoration to compensate for that as part of the conditions of the approval. Wetlands, there are none in the area that we're looking at at the Upper Meadow. There are multiple wetlands in the lower meadow. There are no slopes in the upper meadow area that we're proposing for farming. There's multiple areas that have slopes in the lower meadow. Tree removal is a big one for us. It was one we really paused at as we got our permit. When we were stopped construction, we had permits to do significant tree removal in the lower meadow, including more than 12 heritage trees. There'll be really minor removal in the building site if we proceed in the Upper Meadow. We've completed soil testing in the Upper Meadow and had no significant findings where you've heard what we found in the lower meadow. Electricity in the Upper Meadow, there's infrastructure nearby. We have challenges in getting electricity to the new, the potential site in the lower meadow if we were to move forward due to skeet shooting impact. A fix system is likely feasible. In the Upper Meadow, we'd have a forced sewer main required in the lower, and we'd have a contiguous farm area in the Upper Meadow where we don't have that in the lower meadow. So this is what led us, and I really want the community to absorb this, to come to you and to ask for consideration of an amendment. And as I said, this is the beginning of the process. So we expect that we will hear a lot, that we'll learn a lot, and I want to say that we want what is really best for Pogonip and best for the community. One of the foundational principles of Homeless Garden Project's program is really the healing power of the soil and of nature, and we're committed to being good stewards of the land at Pogonip and of the people for it. I know it's gone on a little bit, but I do want to say a quick thing because a number of people have commented about the possibility of keeping the farm at our current site on natural bridges. So we sent a note to the owner of the property, who, as most of you know, has plans to develop much-needed housing on the site. He made it clear in that as he begins construction, that we can stay there, that's the good news, until he's ready to begin construction, but it is a temporary site. And he's also welcomed us to help in other ways if it's viable, possibly having a garden on his site. But there is not a place there for us to have the permanent home for the Homeless Garden Project that we envision. So with that, I will close and thank everyone once again for your help in moving this forward. I also do want to say, there was a lot of talk about, you know, visionaries in the 1970s who worked to protect Pogonip, and I'm kind of proud to say that I was one of those. I was a student at UC Santa Cruz at the time in 1979 when we campaigned for the path to create a green belt in the city. And there are other people on the Homeless Garden Project Board who have long been part of that, including Paul Lee and Mark Primack. So we get it, we're committed, we love Pogonip, we love the Homeless Garden Project, and we really care about the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Tony, is that, is that the, oh, you're gonna keep going, great.
I'll keep going, I'll try to be brief here.
No, that's fine, no, you've got plenty of time. I just wasn't sure if that was, so please go ahead, thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks, Mayor, thanks Kathy and Dari. So we took this item to the Parks and Recreation Commission, as I mentioned, in September, September 13th. And as part of the process, one of the core questions that we had from, you know, really going into that meeting is what, what is a master plan amendment process? So forgive me if this is a bit trivial, but for the community, I thought this was helpful in the context of the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and just wanted to share this again in this format. So some of the key ingredients that we think of as we go into a master plan amendment process, really start with public outreach and feedback, but then move on to permits and planning, environmental review, and then reviews and approvals by public bodies like the city council and the Parks and Rec Commission. So those are just some of the key ingredients. In terms of some other examples of master plan amendment processes, the first two examples that I have on here actually aren't really relevant to what we are talking about in these plan amendments. So the Parks Master Plan and the Work Master Plan were big giant planning processes, really starting largely from scratch and going through a really comprehensive effort. So that's not what we're talking about in terms of the plan amendment in this case. What we are talking about is much more in line with the master plan amendment process that we went through with Santa Cruz Shakespeare at De La Vega Park and the Emma McCrery Trail in Pogonip around 2010. So we compared the process that we are presenting, or that we presented to the Commission that we're presenting here tonight to the council, just to sort of have that, that sort of, that check and balance. Are we, are we proposing a similar process to what we've done historically? And the answer is yes. So really, the process that we're recommending is almost identical to that of Shakespeare and that of the Emma McCrery process a little bit over 10 years ago. So I just wanted to kind of give a frame of reference on what we are proposing here. So it's not, it's not a new process. In terms of that proposed process, again, these are some of those key ingredients that I mentioned. So in the early stages of our process, we're recommending that we address a lot of these key questions. So we've been in the situation in partnership with Homeless Garden Project where we've encountered, you know, this, this major challenge with pollution in the lower meadow. So as we go into this, we want to avoid surprises. We want to answer these questions that we've heard from the community and questions that we have among staff and even Homeless Garden Project. We want to be able to answer those questions early on in the process. And while we do that, we also want to develop some guiding principles in terms of what these plan amendments might, might look, and how do we think about these different plan amendments? So as we go through the process, we would have draft plan amendments, we would get to a phase where we would have environmental analysis through SEQA. We would have plan review and permitting, which would be done by the planning department, and then an updated lease agreement should the farm site move into the Upper Meadow. So I'll just share here, I shared this in the last meeting, but again, just for the purposes of the community here, the Pogonip Master Plan provides a vision, the current plan provides a vision for the intended use of the Upper Meadow, which is to preserve and restore the meadow for the purposes of habitat and sensitive species, and to renovate the Pogonip clubhouse for education purposes and special events. So the Parks and Rec Department, along with the planning department, see the proposal from Homeless Garden Project as a potentially significant change from the current plan and the current vision for the Pogonip Upper Meadow. So with that in mind, we recommend that consideration of amendments to the master plan include a really open and transparent public process, starting with addressing these key questions from city staff and those raised by the, as well. And then we recommend a proper analysis and studies and environmental review. So just wanted to be sure to mention that again. In the council's packet today is a process map. What I have here on the slide is that same process map, but it's in a different format so we can fit it on the slide. What I wanted to highlight here is the section in orange, the first steps over the first, say, 90 to 120 days, or however long this, this might take, but it's really this due diligence phase. So we have questions, again, as I mentioned, among staff. We've received a lot of questions already from the public, and I know we'll hear more today. And we want to be sure to engage the community, go through public out, through a series of meetings, answer some of these hard questions that we're facing, and begin to develop some of these guiding principles that will lead us to potential plan amendments that will be reviewed in the context of SEQA later in the process. So that due diligence, I think, is really critical in these first steps here highlighted in orange over the next three to four months or so. The process continues for this next slide, and this is where we get into more of the planning application, the SEQA review, and then some of the components related more to the planning department in terms of billing permits, submittals toward the end of our process. So big picture, we estimate, and in comparison to both the Shakespeare project and the Emma McCrery Trail, we expect this to be approximately a two-year process, once it's all said and done, with the SEQA phase being a large bulk of that, of that timeline. So looking again at the city council's direction from the end of August, part of the direction from the council was to initiate the amendment process as expeditiously as possible and report to the council at this meeting today on the 28th as to how the proposal will be incorporated into department work plans. So I want to talk just a little bit about what's impact for staff would be and a request as well. So a couple aspects, in terms of our workload, a couple aspects of our operations that we will both deferring or delaying are up on the screen here. That's completion of some of our existing capital improvement and grant-funded projects that we had planned for 2022. These could be things like the San Lorenzo Park redesign effort that we plan to get into this year, and possibly the Harvey West Pool feasibility study work that we plan to get into this year. So we haven't pinned down exactly what that would be, but those are a couple of the projects that are carried over from previous fiscal years that are on the front burner, so to speak, for our capital work this year. The second item that we'll need to defer is just completion of a strategic review, our cost implications of deferred maintenance. Across the department, we know we have deferred maintenance, but we haven't put great analysis to that to understand what those numbers are, what that true value of deferred maintenance is. And so it's a bit of a planning effort or assessment effort that we'll look to delay. We will need some additional funding for a and a SEQA consultant as we go through this process. The cost for this type of work varies, and we have detail on this in the staff report, but varies generally between about $50,000 and $150,000. So we are requesting as part of the recommendation today for an additional appropriation of $102,500 to be able to hire a planning consultant to help us go through this process and conduct the SEQA analysis. The last thing I'll mention is that moving forward, one area that would be probably most helpful for staff would be council guidance regarding the responsibility for specific costs as we go through. Staff has made an assumption that the Pogonip Master Plan Amendment and SEQA costs shall be borne by the city, but we absolutely welcome and appreciate any guidance on, on costs and how to take those on moving forward. So as we move forward through the process, staff is committed to bringing forth any specific costs or operational impacts to the city council for your consideration and direction as we move forward. So finally, I'll just leave it on this slide, and then Mayor, I'll hand it back to you, but just wanted to summarize the staff recommendation, which is to review and confirm the process and timeline for an amendment to the Pogonip Master Plan to relocate the Homeless Garden Project to the Upper Main Meadow. And number two, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 budget, authorizing an additional appropriation to Parks and Recreation for consulting services related to plan amendments and SEQA analysis. So that's our recommendation. Thank you for your time and patience as I've gone through this, Mayor, appreciate it very much, and happy to send it back your way and happy to answer questions when the time is right.
Thank you, Tony. Let me just, pardon my, off my mouse, so gonna be twisting it here a little bit to use my mouth on my computer. I'll go ahead and look to council members for questions at this point, and then for the public watching, we'll then bring it out to public comments. And I'm gonna go ahead and give a couple of folks who have three-minute, requested three-minute speaking time to go first, and then I'll roll it into other public comments. So I'm just gonna look for council to see if you have additional questions at this point for staff. Councilmember Colton Terry Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tony and Dari and Kathy for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. One question is actually to maybe Kathy and Dari. You know, last time we had the presentation, I got the sense that there was a sense of urgency to move quickly as, as the project has been on hold for a while. So I'm just wondering what this looks like for you all now that we have a better understanding of what the timeline could be and that it could be up to two years? Just wondering what that, how that impacts the...
If you're, I'll start, and maybe then Dari can chime in if she wants to add. We've talked about this a little bit, delays are not good, but we have raised the money. We anticipate that because so much time's gone by, we're going to need to raise more money. So it's likely during this time we'll do some of that. The urgency for the project is right now they're running a training program under the capacity it could be. They're working on a farm that's beautiful but has no running water or toilet facilities, and we don't know when the owner is going to get his permits and proceed with construction, and we would have to be off the property. So that uncertainty is an issue. Our conclusion is putting some certainty to a... certainty to a, we won't have as we start this process, but we expect we'll gain it as we move through it, will be helpful. It's not what we want, but it's really what we need at this point.
Thank you. I guess sort of just to, just to keep going with that around uncertainty, I just, I wanted to get clarification, and maybe this is a question for Tony. In terms of the CEQA process, we may go through the CEQA process and find that we won't be able to do the project in the upper meadow. Is that, is that accurate? Is that a possibility that we go through the CEQA process and we find ourselves in a situation that we can't move forward with the project?
I think that's a good question. See, Tony Condati, come on. Welcome, any comments there. But I think what, again, what we hope to do, at least in the due diligence phase upfront, is start to answer a lot of these really tough questions so that we don't run in, or so that we can mitigate, you know, the surprises or any issues that are going to come later in the process. We want to be able to engage the community early on and address some of those questions. But I'll, I'll send it over to Tony for any comments on that.
And the CEQA process doesn't dictate whether or not you can approve the project, but it will inform whether or not there is significant environmental impacts, whether or not they can be mitigated to a level of significance, and whether or not there are alternatives that can achieve most of the objectives of the project that would lessen environmental impact. And then lastly, there are impacts that cannot be mitigated. The council has the ability to make what's called a statement of overriding considerations, which is essentially saying, we think this project is worthwhile, even though we understand that it will have some environmental impacts that can't be mitigated to a level of significance. So it's really an informant, informational document more than it is, you know, something that dictates how you make a decision on the project.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then my last question is, have we explored or can we explore cost sharing in terms of the planning and hiring of the consultant with the Homeless Garden Project? $102,000 is a significant amount that we weren't anticipating, that I'm sure we'll, where we'll pull from. So maybe we don't have an answer to that question right now, but just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other councilmembers with questions at this point? I have a couple that I'll put out there if no one else. Okay. I just had a couple of questions. Tony, the deferment of the projects that you mentioned, are those going to be deferred of the time commitment from our staff? So you won't be able to basically do the projects because of that? Or is it because of matched costs? Or I'm just trying to understand kind of that deferment. Is it people power or is it the money?
It's primarily people power. Yeah, Noah is our, our only parks planner and takes on a lot of different projects. And so with his time commitment, as well as our park superintendent, Travis Beck, we'll just have to handle projects we'll need to defer. But the two that I mentioned, the pool and the San Lorenzo Park redesign, again, are two that we've carried over from last year and that are kind of on the, on the top of the, the priority list heading into this year. But we have some flexibility with that. Some others include Garfield Park renovations or improvements. So there are a number that really come down to staff capacity and time to, to manage.
And are we in danger of losing any grant funds or anything like that, Tony, if, if those things don't move forward?
On those specifically, no. On those projects I mentioned, no.
Okay. And I've reread most of the, the EIR and the Pogginip Master Plan. The one thing that really strikes me is, you know, especially based on kind of a lot of thought, you know, the mapping in the, in the plan is, you know, frankly, kind of cartoonish. And so, you know, not unexpected, 23 years ago, if you looked at any master plan, that's what most of the maps look like, because they were done by hand, you know. When we think about due diligence ahead, at least from the upper meadow perspective or the main meadow, can you give me, you know, let's just pick the environmental, for example, you know, concerns a lot about, a lot of concerns about habitat, different habitat types have not been impacted. Do you expect, you know, having, basically doing professional level survey work, so hiring a, you know, botanist, actually getting more accurate mapping done? You know, a lot of what's in the master plan is, you know, pretty, pretty rough. And so I'm just curious about what does that due diligence look like? And maybe you could just kind of help us understand that a little bit.
I see, and I'll lean on Kathy and Dari on this a bit as well. So I know, short answer is yes. So we want that to be part of the due diligence, is to understand from a, really kind of a biotics assessment standpoint, what, what is the nature of, of the upper main meadow at this point. So the Pogginip Master Plan talks about it from a sensitive habitat standpoint, a sensitive species up there. But I would say at this point, I don't know that we have a great sense on what is actually present. So I do think that there needs to be some, some analysis, certainly as part of that due diligence to understand, is it sensitive, is it not, what's going on? Homeless Garden Project has done some initial soil tests up there to understand, again, if the soil is contaminated up there as well, and have also planned for a biotics assessment in the spring of 2022. So again, I'll lean on Kathy and Dari for any updates on, on that work that they're doing.
I think your report was accurate, Tony. That's exactly what our thinking is, is that we have more work to do. We've had some preliminary decisions that were somewhat positive, but not at all conclusive.
Thank you. And then my last question, and I'm seeing that we may or may not have fire staff on right now, but I don't know, maybe Lee, I don't know if Lee is still on or not. Lee might be able to, you know, I was looking also, I looked through the whole Parks Commission packet as well. And there was some maps in there, and Tony, you might know this as well, but by my count, you know, not all in the main meadow, kind of spread between the lower meadow and the main meadow. You know, there's some, I don't know, close to 32, 34 fires that were basically GPSed. I'm assuming a lot of those might have been associated, you know, camping fires. I'm not sure exactly what those dots represent, whether it was a fire that got started or whether it was the remnants of a fire, how those were, were actually identified. I'm just curious, what, how do we respond to that? I mean, is someone says, I see smoke, fire goes up there, respond. But I mean, that seemed like a lot, that just, the number was pretty surprising to me, you know, surprising, but not surprising also, because I think, you know, many people in the community realize that Pogginip is a place where a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of our homeless population does end up taking residence there, because it's out of the way. So I'm just curious, though, about what does that response look like? Who does it, you know, what happens when that happens?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. If, okay, Lee is on, and I'd welcome Travis Beck as well. I know that a periodic kind of walkthrough in Pogginip by park staff, police department, fire department, to evaluate conditions. I know there's a methodology behind what constitutes a fire. I think there may be some factors in there regarding fuel tanks and so forth. I'm already speaking out of turn, so I'll send it over to Lee and, and Travis to speak about that frequency, that methodology, what it means, and, and the enforcement. So, Lee, I think you jumped on first, so I'll, I'll send it over to you.
I'll, I'll defer to Travis if, if he's got better information, or I see that Rob Odie is on the line as well. And so I think Rob would probably be best suited if he is available. But Travis may have additional information as well beyond what Tony was. I've seen that, the app and the map, as you were referencing Mayor Myers as well. But Travis or Rob may have more of the specifics.
Yeah, maybe I'll turn to Rob. Rob, I hadn't seen you on, so welcome, Rob.
I'm not sure we do have Rob on. I know he is, he's showing here, but I'm not sure he's actually on. So maybe we can follow up on providing this, this additional information.
That, that works for me. That works for me, unless Travis has anything to add.
I'd just, a brief bit of information, the fire department, in collaboration with Parks and Rec and PD, has been doing regular surveys in Pogginip and other open spaces since the beginning of this fire season, and maps evidence of fuel sources, campfires, propane tanks, gas grills, et cetera. So those are the dots that you are seeing. And then, you know, there are actual fire incidents as well stemming from some of the, the camps there. And, you know, the, the process is pretty much as you outlined, someone sees it, calls it in, and, and fire department responds.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Watkins.
Hey, Mayor. And I just, just for clarification for the public, I mean, today, really what we're being asked to do is to come initiate this process, right? I mean, we're not making any decisions of moving the Homeless Garden Project to this site today. We're really just trying to give them the opportunity to be heard and to give them an opportunity to go through this process. Is that correct on kind of where we're at today?
At Councilmember Cummings, I would say short answer, yes. And just the specifics today for the council in the recommendation language are to endorse the process that we have put forth and to approve a budget adjustment for additional funding for that consulting work to help support the process.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear to the public, that really what we're discussing today is trying to initiate a process so that we can have, you know, an inclusive public community conversation about the moving of the Homeless Garden Project to the site. And that really, you know, we want, you know, ultimately, we want to try to find the best path forward that's going to benefit not only the Homeless Garden Project, which has been a really great asset, supporting homeless members in our community and getting them on homelessness, but also that we want to respect the community and what their desires are around seeing minimum impacts to environment and really trying to make sure we have something that's environmentally sustainable and also compatible with the community interest. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear to the committee. So thanks.
I have Councilmember Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentations and the work on this. I, I just have a question. Maybe it's more of a clarification from Tony or the other Tony, Tony Condati. But when, if we were to move forward, say, you know, fast forward a couple years from now, and the CEQA process lends itself to identifying that, and I apologize, Tony, because I don't have the right legal lift, essentially that it isn't the best move for the, for the upper meadow due to environmental impact. And you mentioned that in order for an override to occur, you'd have to have had assessed other locations. Correct? Is that right?
The CEQA requires as part of an environmental impact report that the council analyze alternatives to the project. The project in this case would be defined as locating the Homeless Garden Project farm up in the upper meadow. So as part of that process, you would have to identify a reasonable range of alternatives that, that meet most of the primary. I would assume one of those alternatives would be to keep the Homeless Garden Project location as it is currently in the, in the existing lease. So that's, that's a decision that the council could make at a later time as well.
And would that also include expansion outside of Pogginip specifically, or would it necessarily have to be, I mean, like, could there be anywhere, I guess is what I'm asking, or has, has that been considered?
Well, that hasn't been considered, but yes, the council could consider alternatives that include locations other than the Pogginip. I mean, I think, you know, to be fair, if, if the council is, you know, if the council is amenable, well, let me rephrase that. Moving forward with an environmental impact report for the upper meadow is going to be a lengthy and expensive process. So I think it indicates the council's very serious consideration of that, of that particular project. And you will analyze alternatives in the process. But as a, and, and until you've done that environmental review, you could not make a final decision on that as well. But it does indicate serious consideration of the proposal, I think.
Okay. No, I, I appreciate that, because I, you know, you want to factor in all the things that we don't know and could, you know, maybe anticipate wanting to have thought about early on, right? So these little...
Right. But one possible outcome at the end of the, at the end of the process is the council could, you know, select a different alternative as the environmentally superior project, which would, of course, entail then negotiating a, you know, a new lease, assuming it's on city property for that other alternative location.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I, I do have many, many questions, many of which I don't think can be answered with the information we have available to us at the moment. So, but I, I will have some, a few questions. I just think hearing from the public and, and sort of factoring those questions in as well would be good. So I'm going to save mine until after we hear from, from...
Great. Thank you, councilmember. And with that queue up, I'll go ahead and take this off to the public now. I see one, two, three, four, five, six hands raised. At this point, if you are going to speak, please go ahead and put your hand up so we get a, a sense of how many people we have that are here to speak. And if you don't mind, if you could please keep your hand up as everybody makes their way through. That way I know kind of how many folks I've got queued up. That's helpful for me. So the first people I'm going to invite up are, Dari, I understand, did you want the three minutes for your client? Or are you going to take three minutes and then he will follow?
There are two people, there's one organization and one client. A graduate, Patricia Meekum, is available to speak, and also a representative from CCOF.
Okay. And they, okay, so why don't we start with Patricia if she's ready, and then we'll go with CCOF. I'll give them both three minutes. So, you know, if they go past that, they'll help, they'll hear a little bell, and I'll have them wrap up. So if Patricia's ready, maybe we'll have her go first. Dari?
I have Patricia M. I'm going to assume that that's her, so I'll allow her to talk.
Great. Welcome, Patricia. Press star six. There you go. You're ready to go.
Hi, thank you. Yes, hi, my name is Patricia Meekum. Thank you for the chance to speak on the Homeless Garden Project today. I just want to say hi to Mr. Elliott. Nice to see you again. I remember when you came earlier to the farm this year to visit. And, and just special thanks to Dari for the opportunity at the Homeless Garden Project. I am a graduate of the project. This program is no joke. This is an extremely organized, personal development program and an opportunity of a lifetime for the right candidate. I entered this program 15 months ago while staying at a shelter. Today, I live in a spacious apartment. I work a full-time job in the home improvement industry, volunteer extensively in my community as well. The project attracts people that are really ready for change, people that will experience one of the best years of their entire lives transforming. With compassion, we are helped to carve out a defined path to housing and employment. Two years ago, after losing my home of 13 years from drug addiction, I became homeless. Night after night, I walked the streets and highways of SoCal, Capitola, and Santa Cruz, rapport with other homeless drug addicts and got my first black eye instead. After months of living this way, thank God, a good friend found me and took me to treatment. I emerged from rehab, clean from drugs, but I was still homeless with a nagging awareness that more needed to be done with me. Then I learned about the Homeless Garden Project. I went to the farm in June of 2020 and was told to show up on time for two weeks consecutively if I could accomplish that much, allowed to continue training. I was so excited, I found myself literally running to keep my position secure at this farm and pass my initiation. Then I spent the next 12 months reaching milestones. Here, I learned how to push myself and ask for help. I started to actually focus and see the behaviors that helped me or hindered me. I was changing. Week after week of faithfully digging in the dirt, writing emails, planning building a resume, harvesting kale, reaching goals, laughing, crying, surrendering, and praying, I realized I finally found the biggest... praying, I realized I finally found the biggest help I needed to have lasting personal change at this farm. Nowhere else could I have accomplished this. And in the end, it led to housing once again and to not just one, but even. I cannot emphasize enough how this farm has been such a critical factor in my recovery from homelessness and unemployment. This place is world renowned and a local treasure. I am so honored to say I was a part of it. This thing is so much more than a garden. Imagine a crown crested with jewels sitting atop the Pogonip, and I'll tell you, what you're seeing is the Garden Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Next, we will have the speaker from CCOF. And Derry, I don't know who that is or if they're, if
That is James Subie.
What's his name?
Five eight seven.
Your own five eight seven?
Two.
And they're on the line?
Bonnie, I see James Subie.
By name?
By name.
Oh, yes, I do too. She's got a blue, can you move her? Great. Thanks Bonnie. Welcome, Jane.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Jane. You've got a little bit of an echo. If you have a device near you, you might want to mute that. Like if you're maybe listening in on your phone or your iPad or something, mute one or the other.
Gotcha. I think I've got you now. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm James Subie. I represent California Certified Organic Farmers. You have heard of us. We're CCOF. CCOF is a USDA accredited certification agency and nonprofit organization, founded in 1973 in Santa Cruz almost 50 years ago. Our headquarters are on the west side, and we certify organic operations throughout North America. CCOF supports evaluating an amendment to the Pogonip Master Plan allowing the Homeless Garden Project relocated to the Upper Meadow. CCOF has been certifying the Homeless Garden Project since 2008. And what this does is we evaluate all materials, crops, and practices annually for adherence to the organic standards, and we also inspect the site annually. In certified organic means that the Homeless Garden Project's growing practices are regulated under federal law and that they are required to, among other things, maintain soil quality in a way that avoids contamination of natural resources, including soil and water. Its practices that maintain or improve biodiversity and not grow any GMO crops. Studies have found that organic farming provides many environmental and public health benefits because it builds high-quality soils and increases soil organic matter, which sequesters carbon from the atmosphere. It also improves soil water retention, which means the soil holds more water like a sponge, reducing runoff and preventing soil nutrients from being washed away. And organic farmers don't use synthetic pesticides, exposure to which can harm human and pollinator health. In addition to strongly supporting and certifying the Homeless Garden Project stewardship of land and natural resources, CCOF staff are Santa Cruz residents. We know firsthand how needed the Homeless Garden Project services are for fellow community members who are experiencing homelessness. We are donors, CSA subscribers, and event attendees, and the Homeless Garden Project and the plans for expansion, taking the first steps of considering amendment to the Master Plan. Thank you.
Go ahead and open this up now to members of the public. Again, I'm just going to work my way down the line here. If you do want to call in, this is the Homeless Garden Project item. I'm giving all members of the public a minute to speak today. And I'm going to call out the last of your phone number. You're going to want to make sure you press star six to get yourself unmuted, and then the time will start. So I'm going to start out with a phone number ending in zero seven nine three.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lushkodgen. I want to express my appreciation to both council and the Parks Commission for your action to support our project. I urge you, items before you today. I spent five years as a consultant to the Homeless Garden Project doing a capital campaign feasibility study, guiding the capital campaign, and then guiding board expansion and development. As you know, as a result, they surpassed their initial goal and raised $3.5 million for the project in early December 2019. I've been in the nonprofit world for 35 years, 26 years in Santa Cruz County, and rarely have I seen such an impactful organization. I was so impressed that I agreed to volunteer to head their board fundraising committee after serving as their consultant. Following year, I joined the board. It's essential that this model program be allowed to move to the nine-acre garden in Pogonip, and I urge your vote in favor of moving forward as stated.
Thank you. Next is phone number ending in two four oh six. Press star six to unmute yourself. Phone number ending in two four oh six.
Sorry. Okay, sorry.
There you go.
Hi. My name is Carrie Mazur. I walked around the Upper Meadow this morning and read the notice asking for the community to protest this move. Many of the key points used habitat destruction and loss of wildlife as their organizing principle. I live on a small organic farm in the Santa Cruz Mountains, not unlike the Upper Meadow. We are visited constantly by all manner of wildlife, including owls, hawks, and bobcats, in addition to bees, butterflies, and hummingbirds, none of which I saw on my walk around Pogonip today. I also observed that the meadow had recently been mowed. Mowing a meadow visits havoc upon the creatures that live there. I would posit that a well-tended order may increase biodiversity of the site. The current HGP garden is an open and welcoming place. At Pogonip, it will be more so. Imagine visitors seeing unhoused members of our community out of their tents, at work growing organic food, and learning to be self-reliant. They are joined by volunteers and members of the public harvesting vegetables and flowers to take home. All the while, hawks continue to soar overhead and are now joined by the flittering of butterflies and bees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Delise Ware. You press star six to unmute yourself. We'll go ahead and let you get started.
Okay, am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
You are. Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. So I am just a mayor community member. I've not, I volunteered with the Homeless Garden before. But I'm also a master gardener and a small farmer. And I'm also sit on the board of the Friends of the UCSC Farm and Garden. So I'm well-versed in the importance of good soil for raising food and the importance of that to agriculture. I'm also the aunt of an unhoused young man who recently died. He lived in Vallejo. And I know that the Homeless Garden Project is a total program, and I tried to get something like that started for him in Vallejo. Unfortunately, he died without access to something like that. But it is an absolutely essential set of services that are, benefit the housed and the unhoused community. They, they deal with food insecurity for the unhoused and the housed. I urge you to approve this, and they must increase their capacity with a larger piece of land. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I have phone number ending in five seven two five. Go ahead, press star six, and you can get started. So can you hear me? We can hear you.
Yes. Thank you. My, my name is Rebecca Seclee, and I'm a longtime City of Santa Cruz resident. I do support the work of the Homeless Garden Project, but I do implore them to stop pursuing this controversial move to relocate to the Upper Meadow of the Pogonip. I feel confident they can find another location that will have less environmental impact and that the community can support. City council members, I urge you to vote no on the motion. Placing the Homeless Garden Project in the Upper Meadow cuts out the heart of the crown jewel of the green belt. This allocation of funds will be the first of many hundreds of thousands of dollars that will be required to pursue this divisive project, and this is not the way I want my tax money to be spent. Thank you for your consideration.
Next up, I have phone number ending in seven seven six seven. Go ahead, please. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon. My name is Sally Shepherd. I'm a longtime supporter, volunteer, former board member, and also I helped in some small way on the capital campaign. I'm passionate about the Homeless Garden Project. So I'm not going to try and make an argument for why this needs to happen. I'm going to say thank you for setting up a really good process for how we can get all of the questions that so many people have answered to make the right decision to help the Homeless Garden Project find its new permanent home. I think we can all agree on that, that a permanent home for an organization that's done great things and is looking to expand their services is what we all want to support. So thank you for setting, taking the time to set up the process. Thank you for hearing us, and, and Godspeed to the process.
Thank you. Next is phone number ending in eight six nine six. Press star six to unmute yourself, and you can start.
Hi, my name is Sheila Cummings. I'm a community member and a long-term volunteer at the Homeless Garden Project. I'm not the best person to address some of the environmental concerns or the logistical concerns that some people may have, nor am I the best person to attest transformative effects the garden can have on many of its participants' lives. What I do want to address is a concern that is sometimes unarticulated, but actually underlies many of the other concerns. And that is that because the garden, homeless population, that somehow having it in Pogonip will create an unsavory environment. I've been returning to volunteer every Friday morning for the last three years at the garden. I wouldn't do that if it wasn't a nice place to be. That's the main point I wanted to make. And if you guys understand that it's a beautiful place, it's to the community, I think we can resolve the other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Williams.
Mayor, just so you know, I have to promote him to a panelist because he has a, an older version of
Okay. He's on a landline, Bonnie?
No, he's just on an old version of
Oh, a Zoom. Okay. Hi, Mr. Williams. You should be able to speak now. Mr. Williams, you should be able to speak. You look like you're unmuted.
He actually looks like he doesn't have audio.
I can't see that from my, why don't you leave him in, Bonnie, and see if we can troubleshoot that, and I'll go on to the next person and come back to him? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we'll go on to caller ending in three four eight five. If you could unmute yourself by pressing star six, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Caitlin Gaffney, and I've submitted detailed written comments to the council that I hope you've had a chance to review. I'm here tonight to ask the council and the leadership of the Homeless Garden Project not to pursue the idea of developing the main meadow of Pogonip open space, and instead to work together on other alternatives that can meet the needs of the Homeless Garden Project without causing the multiple significant environmental impact with converting coastal prairie habitat at the heart of the Pogonip to agriculture, and can therefore be supported by the whole community. To quote the author, C.S. Lewis, "Progress means getting nearer to the place you want to be. And if you've taken a wrong turn, then to go forward does not get you any nearer." I respectfully urge that the idea of relocating the Homeless Garden Project on the main meadow of Pogonip open space represents a wrong turn that would end up being costly, time-consuming, and divisive. I ask to not pursue it further and instead seek a better path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, let's see, oh, Patrick's got his hand up. Okay, Patrick, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Oh, excellent. Well, my name is Patrick Williams. I worked with the Homeless Garden Project close to 14 years, both as the Horticultural Director and also as the farm manager there. I started back in the very early 90s. And when I applied for the job in my job interview, I was told that the project would be soon to the Pogonip. So that is now a generation, a generation has passed while the project has been waiting for this move. I definitely hope that the city council will hear this and move in a positive position. Now, one other thing I want to point out is that I now have a small project in Southern, in South America, in Colombia. And I was watching television a couple, on TV agro. And one of the interesting things I came across there was a program on a Homeless Garden Project in the city of Cali, which was basically patterned after the Homeless Garden Project.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you very much. Next, I've got Chrissy. You could press star six, and you can start.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Brewer, and I, with Patrick, was a garden director in the early 90s until 2001. I saw the project blossom. We, you know, also were insured that it was Pogonip. One thing I'd like to address, and I, I encourage the council to approve this, this move to the Upper Meadow, but I would like to address some of the, I, what I hear as objections to the Homeless Garden Project being out there. And that is that it would encourage more folks living homeless to then be gathered in, in that area. And we have always had a policy at the Homeless Garden Project that our trainees not live on the property, that they are not allowed, I guess, to be, you know, in, living there. And please, I encourage you to accept the, the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have April Wilson. April, if you press star six, you can unmute yourself and go ahead and talk. I think you're still muted, April. If you could press star six, that should unmute you. April, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to the next person. Oh, there you, you're off. You're mute, you can go ahead now. Where'd she go? There she is.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is April Wilson, and I have been with the Homeless Garden Project since 2016. I am a graduate, and I can see involve myself with the Homeless Project. And I am, so, thank you for having me. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the homelessness here in Santa Cruz is a growing issue, and there's not very many opportunities or programs to help those of us experiencing homelessness. However, many opportunities or programs to help those of us experiencing homelessness. However, thankfully, there is this, which has given me a safe, wonderful place to be where I have been able to learn a lot of new skills, work on myself, and Homeless Garden has given me the support and confidence to build on and to help me and us other trainees.
Thank you, April. Next, I've got someone with the letter M on their phone. Press star six, and you can get started.
Hello, my name is Maurice, and I'm a Santa Cruz native with over 15 years of residence. This year, I volunteered over 80 hours with the Homeless Garden Project doing farm work. I've personally experienced how friendly and supportive the HCP staff is. With that being said, I support the city looking into HCP moving to the Upper Meadow of Pogonip.
Thank you, Maurice. Next, I've got phone number ending in 7496.
Good afternoon, and this is Matt Farrell, and I just want to thank the council and Parks and Rec staff, and the POC's Commission for the work they've done on considering this proposal. I think it's the right step forward, and I urge council to adopt it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Next, I have Sheila. Press star six, Sheila, and you should be able to speak. Sheila, we hear you. If you could press star six, we can, we can get you going on your phone. Sheila, I'm gonna move on to the next caller. I'll come back to you to see if we can get you unmuted. Okay, I'll go ahead and call up Suzanne McLean as our next speaker. Press star six to unmute yourself. Bonnie, is there something going on where we're crossing paths? Go ahead, Suzanne. You're unmuted. Thanks.
Thanks.
Good, sorry.
Sorry.
Do you have your iPad or computer or phone on? Just mute that. You're looking at it. There you go.
Yep, thanks. Thanks.
Are you speaking on?
How about now?
There you go, perfect.
Okay. So, this is Suzanne McLean. Thanks to the City Council for the opportunity to speak in the Garden Project. I've been a supporter of the Homeless Garden Project for a number of years, mainly because they provide tangible results in moving people out of homelessness. In addition to the training and support services, the Homeless Garden also provides the community, supports the community by distributing large amounts of produce to nonprofits throughout the county. It's critical that we support this organization and expand their reach by establishing a permanent home for the farm. I'd like to thank the City Council for their support to date, and would appreciate your home and evaluating the best place for the Homeless Garden to continue to do their great work.
Thank you, Suzanne. Looks like Sheila, did she, she might have left, looks like Bonnie. I'll see if she comes back on. Okay, I'll go next to phone number ending in 16... Press star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Evan Jones. I'm the Program Manager at the Homeless Garden Project, and I just wanted to first and foremost thank everyone for having this opportunity for the public forum. Also, wanted to emphasize the mission statement of the Homeless Garden Project, that in the soil of our urban farm and garden, people find the tools they need to build a home in the world. And I'm here this afternoon or this evening just to amplify the voices that have already spoken about that mission statement, whether it's Patricia or other graduates. Being boots on the ground and seeing these individuals work on the farm and accomplishing their goals is really impactful on an individual basis, but I've seen it expand beyond that and affect the community in such a large, powerful way. One young man just graduated last Tuesday, and the very next day, he started a job that he got through connections that he gained at the Homeless Garden Project. So, having a permanent space and an encouraging space to get growth and momentum would be invaluable for the community. So, I support the public process to evaluate the move to the Upper Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I've got phone number ending in 1810. You have one minute.
I haven't heard any answers to the many good questions posed by public letters so far. Just an organized mass phone-in by the HPG supporters. Nonprofits can abuse their donated funds, selling money to overhead. Looking over the IRS 990 forms raises questions for me. I question, does any of the yearly half-million-plus of salary expenses overhead stated pay the homeless to farmers, trainees, or to whom for what? And then also, the selling of some of the production on the open market, I assume called net inventory sales, seems possibly in direct competition to for-profit farmers. If so, the homeless, then, are on-the-job employee trainees at what pay? If they do compete in product sales and the government's part of it, that is socialism. HCP must provide a service to the community that otherwise would not occur for tax-avoiding purposes, but this seems different. Do we have here a permanent giving of public land? How would the land be returned? What performance conditions are required? Exactly what is the cost per individual restored to complete financial independence, including donations, volatile fair market costs of the land lost to public use over time and any other city expenses?
Thank you. We have phone number ending in 1840, sorry, 43. Press star six.
You mean 08, 084...
I'm sorry, 08...
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, please.
Oh, oh, thank you. Yeah, my name is Michael LaFune. I'm a trainee graduate from 12 years ago with the Homeless Garden Project. It helped turn around my life. I'm actually currently on the Board of Directors. I think moving the project to the Upper Meadow would actually be an enhancement and a great improvement to the Upper Meadow, and not a detriment, as many of the opponents say. I think that also having the Homeless Garden Project located up there may provide enough synergistic energy to finally rehabilitate the clubhouse, which has been sitting boarded up and rotting for, you know, the last few decades. I think the people who oppose this, they want less community involvement and fewer people up there. I think more community involvement and, okay, thank you very much. More community involvement is better. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, phone number ending in 3467 now. Hello. Hello. Go ahead, please.
Hi. Hi, my name is Nancy McLean, and I reside in Hollister, California. I encourage you to appropriate, for the appropriate action to enable the Homeless Garden Project to relocate the Pogonip site from the lower to the main. This is a project that I've supported for years, including volunteering and attending fundraising events for more than six years. The Homeless Garden Project is on the forefront of providing a pathway out of homelessness and a future for many of the Santa Cruz residents. With strength and community and council support, it will assure a successful perpetuation that will serve as a model for other communities like mine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Rachel O'Malley. Please press star six.
Hello, I sent a letter separately expressing my three decades of support for the Homeless Garden Project. I'm also a professor at San Jose State where I teach sustainable agriculture. I'm a biologist, and I did my PhD on rice wetlands, comparing natural systems with agricultural systems, and even the organic rice, which is better than conventional rice. Even winter-flooded rice fields are not nearly as good for wildlife. They, we know now so many impacts that farms have on natural systems. It's, it's very dangerous to try to move killed land into our last coastal terrace prairie. It is also very, I want to really strongly encourage you to not move forward with today's decision because I suspect, as I was, you were surprised at how controversial it's turned out. Moving forward without considering working with the Homeless Garden Project, taking $100,000 with legal, it's going to be cut more. Give it directly to the Homeless Garden Project. Hold on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is phone number ending in 7163. Press star six, and we can hear you. 7163, if you press star six, we should be able to hear you. You're still muted. Okay, I'm gonna move on. I'll come back to you. I'll need you to unmute yourself. Looks like you're unmuted maybe now, I'm not sure. I'll move on to the next caller, Colin Hannan, and if you could please press star six to unmute yourself. We can't, we can't hear you. If you could please press star, there you go.
I think, I think I've got it, yeah. Thank you. My name's Colin Hannan. I've lived in Santa Cruz for 20 years, so I live in Davenport now. I just heard about this plan a few days ago, and it boggled my mind to think of developing that open space out there. I don't think that the farm, the farm program should be supported and should find a really wonderful home, but that does not seem like the place to take one of this, this amazing open space and, and do that there. And I don't think there's any question about danger or, or, you know, unsavoriness of the place or anything. I think we all, we all want to support the Homeless Garden Project, and I don't think there's any danger. But that site is, is so special and undeveloped, and there's so many impacts to, to the natural space there and our open space, that, that there's got to be a better place. So, I hope that you'll consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's come back to caller that ended in 7163. It looks like we may have lost them, Bonnie. Yeah, I don't see them. Okay. I'll go to phone number ending in 4469, please. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is...
Can you hear me? Yes, we can, we can hear you.
Okay. I am a born and raised native of Santa Cruz, and I'm also a wildlife biologist. I am not in support of the proposal to move the Garden Project to the main meadow site as I feel it's not consistent with the original intent of our citizens to protect the area for wildlife and outdoor recreation. This project would irrevocably change a fragile coastal prairie and alter human use that's already established, that of outdoor activities. Pogonip is a wildlife corridor, and it connects a network of wildlands across a larger landscape, providing habitat for rare plants, nesting birds, and large roaming mammals. And I'm greatly concerned by this lack of public outreach. I mean, I just heard about it last week, and I'd like the city to review alternatives, not as a garden project, but maybe some restoration activities that could happen in the Pogonip. We need to understand the full cost and the environmental impacts of fragmenting this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is phone number ending in 6483.
Hi. Hi, Jim Tui, and I'm the coordinator for Community Involvement with the Bay School, and we are a student, a school for students with autism. And I just wanted to expand on a subject that I haven't heard yet, and that is that the Homeless Garden Project does an amazing job kind of broadening their scope, their scope, and reaching out and being just a great place for job training for a lot of people with disabilities. And we have a partnership with them where a lot of students who wouldn't be able to be in an indoor location or a more crowded location, their first step into community involvement is at the Homeless Garden Project. So, with everything being mentioned, I did want to call attention to the fact that it is an invaluable place for students with disabilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have caller, I'm sorry, with the name Jacob Pollak. Press star six, and you'll be unmuted. Jacob, if you could press star six, you'll be unmuted. We'll go ahead and move on. Jacob, if you want to still hang on the line, you, but you'll have to unmute yourself in order for us to hear you. Next, I've got phone number ending in 0983.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Jacob Pollak. He, I couldn't get it, the other one, but the same person.
Okay.
I'll make it quick. We got a minute. I, I think you shouldn't go ahead with this, with the, the project at hand. It costs too much money. And previously, we already went through this whole thing about, should we develop the Pogonip, and we agreed to put the Homeless Garden in the lower half. Can you do the upper half as a big change? It's going to really mess with the open space character of the land. I know people look at open space and think, what can we do with it? But it's already being used as open space. The other thing is, I don't think this is a referendum on the quality of the Homeless Garden. It's a great institution, absolutely. The question really at hand is, what's the proper place to move it? And I don't think it's the Upper Meadow. And I was thinking that I wrote a longer letter that you can read at leisure. Thank you so much for...
Thank you, Jacob. Next up, I have Gray Hayes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, great. Yep, you said it. My name's Gray Hayes, and I'm speaking on behalf of the group Friends of the Green Belt, also known as FOG or Fog. We, all of us, every one of our expanding network supports the Homeless Garden Project, but the proposed project is not appropriate for the Upper Meadow of the Pogonip. Want to alert you that we have retained legal counsel to represent our group with regard to this matter. You can find our attorney's letters in the agenda packet, pages 17.233, and again, 17.52. For the reasons stated in our attorney's letter, no action should be taken in studying this particular site any further. Hey, has the city considered the grant application that they signed in the agreement with the state of California for what the Pogonip could be used for? Do you really want to open that conversation? We don't. We'd love for the Homeless Garden Project to stay where it was previously dedicated, but opening this question, this door, which we'll do after this meeting, falls into that question. Please do not move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Enda Brennan. Just press star six, and you'll be able to speak. Enda, we're not hearing you. I'm wondering if we have you on a phone line also. Bonnie, are some of these folks maybe showing up as phone numbers and their, and their names, it seems like?
It's possible. I would have no way of knowing though.
Yeah. Enda, there you go. We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm, I'm muted at this time. Can you guys hear me? So, my name is Enda Brennan. I currently serve as Vice President of the Homeless Garden Project, and I'm one of your downtown commissioners, one of seven that represent you in the downtown area of Santa Cruz. I want to commend all of you for your unanimous support in the I want to commend all of you for your unanimous support in the, in the last meeting that you had. You did deliberate decision to ask for public comment through Parks and Rec, which was absolutely the right thing to do. And I'm sure any of us that actually are aware of the politics of Santa Cruz realized that there was going to be some pushback on this move. But the reality is that the Homeless Garden Project needs a home. We've needed a home for 33 years, actually, and this is our best opportunity. This is going to be a careful deliberative process that you guys are engaged in. And I just encourage you to stay the course of a careful deliberative process, which involves tons of public input, community input, and considering environmental concerns. Please do your unanimous support.
Thank you. Next up, I have phone number ending in 4586.
Hi, good afternoon.
Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Terrence Willett. I've lived in the county for 34 years. I just work at the, which can plant homeless, so I'm well aware of how disconcerting that can be and how we need homeless services. However, Pogonip was purchased with the intent of being open space. We went through this decision-making 20 years ago. It was quite controversial and I'm asking the council, y'all, to respect that prior decision and respect the will of the voters to keep Pogonip as open space. And instead of having a new controversy that costs money, let's focus our aligned, new appro, owned place for the Homeless Garden Project so it can continue its good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the next caller I have is ending in, uh, last four digits, 6679. If you could unmute yourself and then we can speak.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name's Paul Goldberg. I'm the Development Director with the Homeless Garden Project and a community member here and, uh, who lives up in Ben Lomond. And I just want to underscore one point on the fire risk. As noted, there were all those fires in the Pogonip. And part of this project will include HDP, a nonprofit, funding a water line, big enough for fire protection, to the site. So there is an incredible benefit on top of everything else we do to the community in the sense of fire prote, protection. So please do move forward with this project.
Thank you. Bonnie, how long have we been going? I think I counted about 24 or 26 speakers. I did not write down exactly when we started, unfortunately, but I'm not seeing any additional hands, but I do think we have time for additional comments if anybody has those. So I will make a last call for any other public comment on this item. If you do want an item, you'll need to press star nine and raise your hand. Otherwise, we will bring this back to council for deliberation. Okay, I've got two more phone numbers, 0480. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good afternoon.
We can hear you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Brendan Mealy. I'm a parent, property owner, and resident of the city of Santa Cruz. I'm the past president of the Santa Cruz County Farm Bureau and I'm currently the Chief Operating Officer at Second Harvest Food Bank, Santa Cruz County. Mission of the Homeless Garden Project and the Pogonip Farm will directly provide solutions to many of the systemic root causes of food insecurity in our city. I've been involved with the Homeless Garden Project since 1995 as a U C Santa Cruz student. I have 18 years of experience managing commercial organic farming operations and have been a consultant on the project and the Pogonip Farm design. I appreciate the city's commitment to the farm's original site and the project and would advocate for the city to move forward with the Park Staff recommendation to evaluate the process of the proposed move from the lower to upper Pogonip Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have phone number 8701. Press star six and you'll be unmuted.
Hello, my name is Patrice Boyle. I am a past board member of the Garden Project. I am a downtown merchant and longtime resident of Santa Cruz. We, I just want to say that the Garden Project tackles and signifies a vast array of issues, including the dismal state of our natural world, the dismal state of our corrupt food system, the growing and long-term and tragic issue that is homelessness, and the unequal distribution of opportunity even to members of our own community. The upper meadow next to the, this will be an ideal place for the Garden Project. It is flat, it's not toxic, and it's already been developed. Kathy Calso's excellent previous site comparison outlines additional good reasons for this. In the non-industrial, hands-in-the-dirt restorative gardening of the Garden Project, it's really good for people, but it's also good for the soil and it will provide habitat for indigenous flora and fauna populations that are not currently supported. For decades, the city of Santa Cruz, the city council, after city council, including this one, have supported and encouraged the Garden Project to follow this plan. I urge you today to continue in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that do want to speak on this item? Okay, I've got Sylvie Childress, please.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
My name's Sylvie Childress and I would like to urge you to reject the proposal to move the Homeless Garden Project to the Upper Main Meadow. Upper Main Meadow is a very special habitat. It's one of our last remaining places of coastal prairie habitat. And the, the question at hand is not whether or not the Homeless Garden Project is a worthy organization. The question at hand is whether this is the appropriate location for it to be permanently. And I would, I would say that it is not and there's already an E I R that has been location from the, from 1998 that says that this meadow is not an acceptable location for a farm to be held. There's many sensitive habitats there and reasons that it shouldn't be there. So please reject this proposal.
Thank you. Bonnie, how are we doing, um, how are we doing on time? Did you take a note?
We, I'd say we have about six minutes left.
Right, okay, that's about what I calculated. Okay. We have caller with the name J, H O N D. Please press star six and you can go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could turn off your, whatever device you may be listening on.
Um, well, I'm, I'm on a computer.
Okay.
So, okay. So, my name is Mr. Goldner and I sent you a letter by email, five-page letter detailing what, what I'm going to skim over real quickly here. The main thing, the main things I want to say here is that the Homeless Garden Project has had 24 years since, from 94 to 2018, since their present site was selected, 20 years since the Pogonip Master Plan was approved in 98, and 11 years since the book Duel of Santa Cruz was published in 2007. A book displayed a picture of the skeet range with a background, the upper slope of, of the lower meadow. So they had 24 to 11 years to do their homework, known as due diligence, and they haven't done it. We bail out of that site with costs running into hundreds of thousands of dollars. But by far the most impactful, the effects of this site change, if any part of the former 9.3 acre pole field is used, the city will lose its last large, flat, undeveloped area beside a sports field group of four full-size adult ballfields, which we've needed for more than 30 years. The city has built one ballfield in 60 years and they screwed that one up and paid a million dollars. So I'm asking you, and to get a similar site in the city, and the only site available would be Westside Industrial Land, would cost $18.6 million if the president costs land. We got this one for $44,000 an acre from the state. So I...
Any other, we have time for maybe one more comment. I'm not seeing any other hands, so I'm going to bring this back to the council now. And I will call on Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who has shown up and spoken up today. I, you know, I, the things I'm hearing really resonate for me, with me, and, and I think we're, we're all agreed, or there seems to be some, you know, one thing I'm hearing is agreement that this is going to take time. It is going to take resources and cost money and, you know, that's something that we have, at least, you know, in our previous actions suggested that we are interested in pursuing and that we have a commitment to the, finding a home for the Homeless Garden Project in the Pogonip. It's unfortunate that, you know, we, we didn't, the plans that were made, you know, are not working out, that, you know, skeet shooting and, you know, and contamination have kind of disrupted the process. And, and so, you know, I, I think that the, what we're, what, what the recommendation today is something that, you know, as, as people have said, is really, you know, the beginning of this process. I'm, I hear some, you know, this sense of urgency and concern about making this move. And again, I know it's been stated, but I'll just reiterate, what we're talking about here is opening up a process. So there, that we, we do, you know, people say we haven't heard about this and, and that's true. And I, you know, me, I'm always strongly advocating for community engagement and I want to see that happen in this process. In terms of environmental impact, you know, I've, I've read through a lot of materials and, and as an aside, I'm, I'm just going to ask because I was not able to access the original environmental impact report that some people have been referring to. And I'm just wondering if I, a question for staff, if it's possible to get that, to make that available on our website so that people who want to take a look at it can do that. My read of the Pogonip Master Plan, you know, relates as well with what others have said, but I think that go, that, that, at a minimum, beginning to explore this and for the, the cost of getting a consultant on board and getting our staff, you know, working with a consultant and having that expertise, we, we will learn more and we are not deciding today to move Pogonip to the upper meadow. We are deciding on whether or not we want to get that additional information to answer a lot of questions that quite frankly, I don't, I don't feel that, from what I've read and I have read pretty extensively, I have answers to. And so we're, we're kind of making assumptions about which area, you know, environmental sensitivity in, you know, these spaces, but there, I, I believe there are environmental impacts and potentially significant ones in either of the, the locations. So, you know, I think for me, it just feels like moving forward with this process will help us understand, and again, that's what E I Rs are for, you know, to, to see, to look at, at the impacts, to really seriously study those and to make determinations about alternatives. So a lot of the things that folks are saying that we need to have will have that process at the same time we're hearing, don't do it. So I, I guess I'm, I'm leaning on the side of let, let's do it. And I also have another, in addition to supporting, you know, and I'd like to make a motion if I could, and Bonnie Bush, our city clerk, has a copy of it. I, I'd like to add a direction in there so that we, you know, we can actually get some additional information about the lower meadow and the constraints there, costs of remediation. We know it's, you know, like, the messages that I, so far in what I've read is like, it's going to cost a lot of money and, you know, there's, but there's some detail, you know, within that and there's some, I think, navigating that, that can be done. And so I, I wanted to just put this out there as a starting place for our conversation to, so this motion is essentially, one and two is the staff recommendation to confirm the process and timelines for an amendment to the Pogonip Master Plan. It's, you know, it, this is a potential amendment, so I'll just say that. I don't need to say, know, know that it needs to be in the language, but for a potential amendment to the Pogonip Master Plan to relocate the Homeless Garden Project farm to the Upper Main Meadow. Two, to adopt a resolution amending 22 budgets and authorizing an additional appropriation to Parks and Rec for consulting services related to amendments and sequo analysis. And then my addition is to direct staff to prepare an evaluation concurrently, mission of the process for remediating contamination in the lower meadow, meadow to residential and therefore agricultural standards and that, including an estimate of costs and timeline to circulate and update to the, to the council for consideration in the overall process as soon as possible. And I owe that additional work for our staff. So I've, you know, submitted this in advance and I'm, I'm hoping that folks are, feel comfortable that this is a piece of the puzzle that, that ought to be done in order to get us the best information we can possibly get to make the best decision we can make that meets, you know, meets the goals and reduces any environmental impact on the Pogonip. So there's the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh, I'll leave it there.
Thank you so much. Is there a second to that motion? I see Vice Mayor Bruner, Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, my hand, uh, next, I'll second the motion and just express also appreciation of the community's comments. You know, the Homeless Garden Project has been really patient with the city. You know, it's been over 20 years that they've been working with the city to try to bring this forward. And the truth is that, you know, the city initially identified the lower meadow, but, you know, when it was kind of at the last minute, the 11th hour, getting ready to break ground, when it became known that the site was contaminated, you know, we had to shift. And so moving it to the, yeah, was never the intended location for this project. As people have said, you know, we need to look for another place to put the Homeless Garden Project and, and this, what we're doing tonight is creating a process to evaluate the potential for it to go at this site, at the upper meadow. And so, yeah, and I do want to thank the Parks and Rec Department for taking this out to the commission, to get into commission support. I think it's gone to our Parks and Rec Commission multiple times now and both times that the commission's weighed in, they've, maybe not unanimously, but they had, you know, majority support for at least taking this approach of, you know, starting a process and kind of, and, and it's a process of evaluation to see what's the potential for this. And I really want to express my appreciation to the Parks and Rec Department, like, commission for their support of this. And I think that, you know, given that we have that level of community support and we've heard a lot of support from the community today, that at least starting this conversation is a good step so that people can have their voices heard and so that we can, you know, ultimately determine if this is the best outcome and option for us. So I think we owe it to the Homeless Garden Project, given their 20 years plus of patience, work, to work with the city to find a permanent home, that we owe it to them to, to go through this process. So I'm happy to second the motion before us.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have Vice Mayor Bruner.
Thank you, Mayor Myers. Thank you to Director Elliott and Homeless Garden Project Gary Ganthorn and Kathy Calso for the information. Thank you to each attendee that sat on the phone and called in with your input and public comment, and thank you to all the emails that we've received. It's been very interesting. I think what's clear to me and is very apparent is that we need more data and, as my colleague, Councilmember Brown was stating, this is the beginning of the process. And to determine really the argument of environmental impact and what exactly that will bring, as, as, you know, it's stated that there are portions already developed and in the area in the upper meadow and the remaining portions that would need to be farmed and guarded. There are many emails and a lot of input and I think even one caller that really explained the process of organic farming and how it can create, increase biodiversity and... of organic farming and how it can create increased biodiversity and create a home for the animals and the, the land and the, you know, everything in the area. So, we need to know for sure if that would be the case, and that's the data that would be thought in this process. So, we, I think that, you know, this is, in of that exploration, and I really appreciate the site comparison site. I know a lot of, or several of the arguments as well against this move was regarding the coastal prairie. And I found it interesting that in the upper meadow acres would be used versus six acres in the lower meadow. So, less, less impacts in various ways in that site comparison chart in the upper meadow. And so, I'm really curious to see as we go through this process. Like that, I know we spoke last meeting regarding some of the lower meadow remediation costs and timeline. And that was a question that was unknown. I think that information will be valuable. So, if there, I'm glad that's added into the motion, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from other councilmembers at this point?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'll just, oh. I'm sorry, Mayor. Could I, if I could just make one more comment. So, another, I just will say that in conversations I've been having with people outside of this meeting, their concern that was raised is related to, you know, the remediation need that will exist in the lower meadow regardless of the location of, the ultimate location of the Homeless Garden Project. And concerns about, were we to make a decision that does not involve, does not involve a requirement to remediate up to that residential level higher standards that the city may decide to just tap it? And, you know, which is, is not, you know, I mean, that has a lot of challenges in and of itself and problems associated with it. So, because, you know, lead moves, contaminants move regardless of whether there's asphalt or concrete on the top of it. So, so I just wanted to acknowledge that I heard those concerns too, and I, that that, I'm assuming it will, and I hope it will be a part of the conversation and our ultimate decision-making about how we move forward because that site is, is still, you know, up for discussion about, about what to do there.
Thank you, Member, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Holder?
Sorry, I didn't hear you call my name. I guess I just had a couple of comments, and I think that one thing that everyone in the community can agree on is that nothing can be built in this community without tremendous public input and outreach and outcry. Doesn't matter if it's an organic farm, a ball field, or a library with affordable housing on top, somebody's going to have something to say about it. And so, I think I'm agreeing with my colleagues in that although it's expensive, it's important for us to move forward with the public process. And, and I just want to say that the first speaker, Patricia, her comments really touched me. And I think that it's the whole, this is, you know, irrelevant to this meeting. I would love to hear from the Homeless Garden, how many people they have helped with job training and a path to being housed over the years. I think that's just, you know, something that the community would like to know. But anyway, thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have Councilmember Watkins and then Councilmember Colton Terry Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep my comments short also. I, you know, will express my appreciation as my colleagues have as well in terms of just the complexity of timeline and the balance of all of the different factors. And want to thank those who reached out to us and, and gave us their input on best next best. I also want to thank the Homeless Garden Project folks for being on and sharing really their thought process, which is very thorough and, and rooted in a commitment to wanting to continue the great work that they are doing. And I, too, felt really moved by the speakers and just really want to recognize their incredible program. And so, our job is to start this process now to figure out the best, finest space for them that's going to work for our parks and our community at large as well as environmentally. And so, I appreciate this direction. I also just wanted to add my appreciation for the additional component of the recommendation because I do think we want to also maintain an understanding of what's going to happen as well as, you know, a timeline associated with the lower meadow as well. So, those are my, my brief, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Colton Terry Johnson?
Thank you all. So, keep my comments brief. I also want to thank everyone who called in today and the presentation provided by our staff at Homeless Garden Project. I've had the privilege of working with the Homeless Garden Project and some of the work I've done in the community around unhoused youth. And so, I've experienced firsthand how incredible their program is. And I know that no, none of the callers today questioned that. I heard that very loud and clear. I think, you know, my colleagues have all said it, but I think moving forward and exploring if this is a feasible space for the Homeless Garden Project is a good direction. I do hope that we can get creative about how we fund the consultants. I think let's put our heads together, let's partner with Homeless Garden Project and see if we can find some other outside resources. And I would be happy to work with our staff in the Homeless Garden Project to look at that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, and I'll just close with a few comments. So, you know, I, it kind of in evaluating this, I really, you know, we have made a commitment to this organization. And it may sound like a long time, and it is a long time, for 20, 20, actually 23 years. Nonprofits are incredibly, they just do the work that, you know, government and business doesn't do. And their timeline is always longer, and it really, I think, just behooves the city to try to honor the commitment that we made to have them be on Pogonip. I appreciate the, putting the motion with regards to sort of doing, in a sense, some parallel due diligence, you know, really understanding conditions in the lower meadow and really trying to get those details together so that we can, you know, really continue to make a decision here. I also just want to acknowledge all the comments about Pogonip, about its specialness to all the people of Santa Cruz. And to, you know, really recognize that conservation actions are, you know, in a sense, they're really meant to be forever. And I think that's always a struggle for people when they perceive that there's been something to undo that forever-ness of preservation and conservation of land. I think though that, you know, doing this due diligence is really important. I've, I've done a little bit of conservation, you know, land protection in my time. And it's always important to really understand, you know, that land, you know, change over time. You know, we've been seeing a lot of that unfortunately in California in the last few years. And I think really what we want to create is a community of stewardship around this property. I visit it a lot weekly, used to be there almost every day. And what we're really losing right now in Pogonip is an actual commitment to stewarding that property. And it does need stewardship. It has a lot more invasive species on it than there used to be. And, you know, we, we need to commit, not to just looking at Pogonip and appreciating that, although that is a great value to everyone, but we also have to provide some caretaking of the property. So, you know, I think it's worth doing the due diligence with these two different sort of paths. And I will echo the comments of colleagues that have mentioned, you know, if we can do, do some additional discussions with Homeless Garden to see, you know, how we might be able to fund some of this would be very helpful. I'm, I'm sorry to lead, to lose one of our projects, which is San Lorenzo Park Master Planning, which I think is a really important part to the community. So, you know, if we can, if we can try to figure out how to do some of this work together, it would be, I think, very helpful. There's other park, park priorities that I think we don't want to lose track of as the city as well. So those are my comments, but I am, I will be voting for the motion. The Director Elliott has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate really a lot of what you just said. I think one thing in particular, I just wanted to help provide some context on number three. And you mentioned parallel due diligence, which I think is a great, a great way to say it. I think on number three, and just to set the, for the council and the community, this, the process that we're working through on the lower meadow is really in process already related to this directive on number three. As I mentioned in the presentation, we'll get some feedback from our consultant that we expect on October 15th. County Environmental Health will then review that, and we'll kind of get into this planning phase for the remediation plan and costs and so forth. We expect that, or we expect to have this information probably by the spring. So for Councilmember Brown, I think, who offered the, the motion here, and for the council, just on number three, just setting that expectation that as soon as possible is likely the spring when we have this in, in a more concrete way. The other aspect I would just mention regarding the lower meadow is, in part, how the lower meadow is remediated is based on how it is used. And so, part of the, part of the process that we were undertaking with Homeless Garden Project prior to Homeless Garden Project sending the letter to the council, they were working on a site management plan for the lower meadow to really define how it would be used. And that's a real critical component for county environmental health to understand how that's going to be used and therefore what the level of remediation will need to be. So we haven't spoken directly with Homeless Garden Project about this, but in that spirit of parallel due diligence, I think continuing that site management plan in the lower meadow may be a really critical step while we also go through this master plan amendment process. Because then what we could do is we could look at the lower meadow in terms of both, kind of a concept where, where farming is not occurring, but if farming is occurring in the lower meadow as articulated by that site management plan, that would really help us be able to compare and bring much more detailed information back to the council on number three here in terms of the motion. So just wanted to offer a bit of that context and recommendation for that site management plan in the lower meadow.
Great, thank you, Director Elliott, for those clarifying comments. Okay, we have a motion on the, on the floor by Councilmember Brown and a second by Councilmember Cummings. The motion is up for the public to see, and I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor, Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Colton Terry Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings? Holder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone, for participating tonight. We're going to move on to oral communications as the final item tonight. Oral communications is a time to speak to items not on our agenda. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if you want to comment during oral communications, now is the time to call in. Instructions should be on your screen. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not listed on today's agenda. If you are interested in coun, in addressing the council, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. You will have two minutes to speak. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. We request that you clearly and slowly state your name before making your comments so that we can accurately capture, capture it in the meeting minutes. However, it is not required to state your, your name. Please remember, this is a time council to hear from the public. We are not able to engage in dialogue with each member of the public, but when we are able, we will address the questions raised after oral communications has been completed. And I was contacted by one individual, hopefully he's on the line tonight, that I do know that is planning to speak. And that's, I believe, Taylor. So, Taylor, you're the one hand up this evening. So, if you press star six to unmute yourself, I also see Gray Hayes has raised his hand, so I'll call him next. And this is for items not on the agenda. Okay, Taylor, go ahead, please.
Hey there, everyone. My name's Taylor Lane. I've been a resident here in Santa Cruz for about 10 years. Thanks for curating some time for me to talk on this issue. I am the creator of Surfboard, which is several surfboards made from over 100,000 cigarette butts collected off California beaches in just the last couple of years. These are the most littered items in the world. There's 4.5 trillion, trillion of them littered every year. They're a non-biodegradable plastic, which breaks into microplastics accumulating in our marine organisms and eventually in ourselves. These leach toxic chemicals, such as arsenic, lead, nicotine, into our environment. And they've been known as a fire hazard and have been responsible for over 88,000 acres burned in California since 1980. Big Tobacco takes no responsibility for this. They continually push this onto communities like us, and it also is a health equity issue because oftentimes this disproportionately affects communities and communities of color. So, every year, Caltrans alone spends about $14 million picking up cigarette butts on the highways and dealing with this waste. What we're looking to do is basically address this issue here in Santa Cruz. And, you know, the thing is, is no one is out here advocating for it. It is a bipartisan issue. And City Council has an opportunity to lead the world in holding big tobacco accountable for this waste. So we're asking that City Council strongly support and ordinance to ban the sale of single-use filtered cigarettes in any and all jurisdictions of Santa Cruz County. You know, this, we can't wait five to 10 years. And we have an opportunity. We've traveled the world. We've seen this issue all over the place. And we have an immense opportunity at our fingertips to be the first county to actually set a role model and example to hold these big corrupt corporations accountable for their waste. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Gray Hayes, you're up next. This is for items not on the agenda. Go ahead, please.
Hey, thank you. Gray Hayes, I'm a local ecologist, and I just wanted to say, recently looking at the Parks Master Plan, I realized that there's a priority in there to do wildlife and plant surveys, restoration plans, management plans for native species. I want to suggest that that's super important. Santa Cruz City, you all are in charge of many endangered species. The water departments doing, managing the aquatic systems of our terrestrial systems in the green belt have really seen very, very little attention. And it's a real shame because we should set a good example with our environmental community. And I know we're being pulled in different directions. For instance, the Aloney Tiger Beetle is a two-city green belt land. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service asked the city if they would, if the Fish and Wildlife Service could pay for restoration of the Aloney Tiger Beetle, translocation to the Pogonip. And the city declined. We also, I worked on a grazing management plan for free with the Natural Resources Conservation Service for the city. They declined to accept it or even really implement it or think about it. I really want to ask, what is the city doing with its rare habitat except trying to create places where endangered species aren't anymore so that you can develop alternate uses? It's very sad. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other folks in the audience tonight who would like to speak regarding during, for items not on our agenda tonight? I have not seen any additional hands this evening. So, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn our meeting, our meeting this evening. I'm sorry, phone, phone caller 1-810, do you want to speak to oral communications? You can press star six if you want to adjust us.
Yeah, mRNA COVID vaccinations should be a personal informed choice, but suffer now in awful new power and greed tyranny. Newsom-Biden government mandates inciting people to treat the others badly are exactly how the worst atrocities in history began. Over 6,500 have died because of vaccinations. Tens of thousands have had quite certain side effects. The death counts attributed to COVID are inflated. The average age of a COVID death is higher than the normal life expectancy, and the survival rate is 99.5% overall and is far higher for most people. mRNA vaccines do not prevent infection or transmission of COVID. Effectiveness is short-lived. Virus mutations for a simple virus like COVID are rapid. The existence of COVID-infected large animal populations is a virus reservoir. Eradication of COVID via these vaccines is therefore a pure fantasy or lie. COVID can be a severe blood vascular disease for some, but the prohibitions on prescribing safe, cheap, timely antiviral treatments early on when they would prevent damage proven observationally all over the world, and instead mandating problematic, expensive patented big pharma drugs combined with protocol treatment possible of letting COVID ravage via quarantine then prescribed malpractice death by ventilator was and is mass murder. The now less credible, politicized, and unbelievably culpable CDC, Fauci, and Walensky, who still don't prioritize treatment research for the sick, await hell. I will also mention Governor Newsom wasted no time following the recall signing a bill making per, the fraud plague vote by mail system, signing AB 9 dealing a death blow to single-family housing allowing up to two duplexes on an SOFR lot, and signing AB 1184 allowing children to get abortions and sex change operations without parental knowledge. Look, ma, I got a double mastectomy, will be followed a few years later by, "Mom, I thought this would make me happy, but now I feel like part of me is missing." I hope all those Newsom voters are enjoying more practices, more public education, leftist brainwashing of innocent children to hate white people, make people of color feel their victims, promote leftist social justice wiring.
Thank you. Bye. Hey, I'm not seeing any other hands, so I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting this evening. Thanks, everyone, for attending. Good night.